The regular meeting of the Southern Shores Town Council for February the 5th, 2019 is now in session. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands in its own right, under God, in his wisdom, with the liberty and justice of our all.
I'd ask you to join me in a moment of silence if you would. Thank you. This time I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda, council.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda and to leave item 5B from the agenda.
Thank you, Jim. Item 5C, the public hearing.
5B.
I'm sorry. 5B?
5B.
I got it. Everyone understand that? Jim, I'll just leave item 5B from the agenda. Is there any... I second the motion. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I mean, is it going back or what's gonna happen with you?
I don't think we have enough yet from the planning board on this, and this is just to table it until we get more, you know, until the planning board comes to us with recommendations.
This is for the overlay residential district option, but you're saying there's more options so that...
Yes.
Make your premature to consider.
Yes, the planning board has been speaking of other things. I think that the overlay district still has some validity, but let's get all our options here in front of us before we decide anything.
What does the planning board think about that?
I don't know. I didn't ask them.
They made recommendation.
You have the chair here.
You want to ask Lisbon her thoughts? I'm sorry, wait. Excuse me. Lisbon, do you have some thoughts on this you'd like to share with us?
Good evening, everyone. How are we? What I had planned to say was that the planning board has asked the staff to develop some language to address managing density and capacity of single-family dwellings, large single-family dwellings, using maximum square footage, septic capacity, and occupancy limits because we can't do it by limiting bedrooms. So we have made that request to staff, and they are working on it.
I think that answers our question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisbon. I think Mr. Connor's motion is probably valid because we do know that they're still working on that CTA. So, any further discussion, council? A motion in a second. All in favor of tabling this agenda item to a future date? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is made and carried unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, you want to clarify that also? Thank you.
I'll second.
Got a second? As amended?
I'll second.
Consent. I got it. You seconded that motion, right?
Yes.
All right. All in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended? Indicate by saying aye.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Not amended.
I'm sorry?
We approve the agenda?
Yes.
Technically, technically as amended is how we record that. How we record that. It wasn't stated that way, but we'll record that as agenda approved, as amended.
As amended.
Yes.
So now we're just doing the consent.
Yeah, I got that. I got that.
Well, it wasn't amended, or is it?
No, I understand that. My apologies, council. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda? Tab one.
You got it.
Thank you, Gary.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion at all? All in favors? If we think consent agenda, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Thank you, council. This time I'd like to call on Kim Andre from the Outer Banks Association of Realtors. Good evening, Kim.
Hi, how are you?
Fine, thank you.
Thank you all for having me. I'm sorry Willow couldn't be here. I'm definitely not quite the Spitfire she is, as you all know from many years of working with her. But she did want us to bring forth some good information for you. Thank you very much. On potential homeowner rate increase filing that we are currently trying to do battle with the state. And we've got a short presentation here for you. There we go. The North Carolina Rate Bureau is currently requesting a 7.5% overall average statewide rate increase for homeowners, condo, and tenant insurance. This would also affect wind-only policies. This is also coming directly on the heels of their last increase, which was in October of last year, 2018, and they have not even seen yet what that has done for them, and they're already attempting to raise the rates again. What it means to Outer Banks policyholders, based on a $200,000 dwelling rebuild for your value, is we are the top territory up there, 1-1-0. It is proposed for a 30% change in our overall rates. So if your current rate is 2383, the new rate as of this year would be $3,098. It also goes down and details some of the other counties that are out here on the coast with us, but we are definitely more concerned at this moment with our beach community here. There is a public comment forum which is being held to listen to the public input on the Rate Bureau's rate increase request. This will be held at the North Carolina Department of Insurance's second-floor hearing room on February 26th. That starts at 10:00 in the morning and goes until about 4:30 in the afternoon. I've actually sat in on one of these one year, and it was the longest day of my life. I have to be honest. Because if they come forward, they come forward. If they don't, they don't. But you have to wait there the whole day for someone to come forward to speak because they leave that room open for the whole entire day. The Department of Insurance is located at the Albemarle Building at 325 North Salisbury Street in Raleigh. Emails can be sent, and we would ask you to send, absolutely everyone to send one. Emailed public comments should be sent no later than February 26th to 2018homeowners@ncdoi.gov. You can also write public comments, mail to Tricia Ford. She's a paralegal administrator to be received no later than February 26, 2019, and the address is below there as well. There are some of the talking points that we would suggest that you use, mainly being that the proposed rate increases are excessive, unwarranted, and unfairly discriminatory, which we can all agree to. The filing impacts affordability of housing and the ability of policyholders to make mortgage payments. This impacts families that live in our year-round neighborhoods. The filing does not include the number of policyholders or amounts charged over the manual rate under a consent-to-rate issue. We would ask that you please deny the 2018 homeowners' filing in the subject line or personalize it as you see fit. The increase in the homeowners' insurance rate, year-round resident policyholders', wind-only policy, and again condo and renter policies, so it actually affects absolutely every single person. Rate increase just went into effect, like I said, on October 1st, 2018. There's not been enough time to thoroughly evaluate the adequacy of the newly effective rates. Therefore, why should they put forth some additional rates? And no filing should be considered until the North Carolina Department of Insurance has clear knowledge of how many policyholders are paying premiums based on a consent-to-rate and how much over and above the manual rate has already been charged. In addition to tonight's presentation, we will be doing a presentation with a dare of women voters, public forum. This will be held next Wednesday, February 13th, at the Kill Double Hills Town Hall. It's gonna be from 7:00 PM till 8:30. Willow will actually be presenting that one, I guarantee that, and she will be able to provide a total overview of absolutely everything. So we would invite you to come to that if you are so available. Also on the back table, I have some On Common Ground magazines. If you'd like, feel free to take one. We are working right now with the State Association to get a homeowners' alliance pulled together for everyone on the Outer Banks so that everyone can be properly heard. Realtors have extremely loud voices, but when the homeowners all join in with us and say the exact same things we do, we become a very large and collective voice. So our last slide today would be to ask everybody to email the 2018homeowners@ncdoi.gov, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Kim. Appreciate it. This time I'll call on our town planner. Wes, good evening.
Tom. Before, can we get a summary of this and that email and everything on our town website so our homeowners can actually have access to it?
I spoke with Willow, and she would very much like that if you would be able to share that on the town website. So it's completely.
That's fine with me. We have to ask our staff if they can handle it.
Peter, can we do?
They'll be on there immediately.
Okay.
Thank you. Pardon me. Go ahead, Wes, sorry.
No problem. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Members of council, I have a brief report for y'all tonight for the month of January. There were 11 zoning permits issued, 20 building permits issued. Those consisted of three new single-family dwellings, one fire station, three remodels, one repair, four accessories, and eight others. There are currently 22 single-family dwellings under construction in the town, and the total amount of fees collected in January was $11,885.29. With respect to the February 19th planning board meeting, there'll be a meeting on that day, that is a Tuesday, due to the holiday, and the board may be considering CUP 1901, an application from American Tower LLC/Verizon Wireless to modify an existing conditional use permit to extend the height of the existing wireless facility located at 148A Ocean Boulevard. They indicated prior to the last planning board meeting that they wanted to delay the review process for a few months. The planning board agreed to that, so I'm waiting to hear back from them if they want to move forward with that in February. The board may also continue its discussion of non-conforming lots, depending on what happens tonight, and potential regulations to address large single-family dwellings. Any questions?
Any questions, council? What was that meaning of the date of the next meeting?
March 19th, or February 19th.
February 19th?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Wes.
Yes, sir.
Anything else, council? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Our police chief, David Cole. Good evening, David.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of council. I'm gonna change up the agenda. We'll introduce our youngest officer, our newest officer. We have a rambunctious, 15-month-old. What I want to explain to you is we've been short an officer since July, when Officer Jones resigned and moved back to Pennsylvania. And it was a tough summer, and I appreciate all the officers stepping up to fill the void. But we take it pretty serious when we look to hire somebody. And it took us about seven and a half, eight months before we found the right mix. And I'm happy to introduce Officer Zach Eens. He's lived here on the Outer Banks for 15 years. His two FTLs, field training officers, are with him tonight, Officer Eddie McKeever and Eric Brinkley. He attended Cape Fear Community College, received his associate's degree. He also, that's where he was certified through the Basic Law Enforcement Training Academy. He's back here with his wife, Katie. She is a labor delivery nurse in Chesapeake. And that's Carter. Carter is 15 months old. Zach comes from Kill Double Hills Police Department with five years of experience. Zach? You can bring Carter if you want. Trust me, Carter, I sit through these too, and I feel the same way he does. I would just like to introduce you to the town council, and you've already met Peter. But we look forward to having Zach on the Southern Shores Police Department. He's a very good fit. Next thing I would like to do is Officer, Master Patrol Officer Eddie McKeever has received his Advanced Law Enforcement Certificate. And what I want you to understand is that, before I give you a little background on Eddie, he graduated from Logan's Port High School, Logan's Port, Indiana. Gosh, 1999. I had 15 years on the job when he graduated. He enlisted in the United States Navy, and he served honorably for four years, in which he was deployed twice, once during wartime. He moved to the Outer Banks for a year, then he moved back to Indiana and got his two-year degree. He is married to his wife, Jessica, who is also a registered nurse here in the Outer Banks that works the emergency room. He received his BLET, which is his Basic Law Enforcement Training, in 2009. He started with the Nagshead Police Department, and then a year later, we were fortunate enough to hire Eddie. You see Eddie out on the street, I've never seen him not smiling. He's got an excellent personality, and he's also an excellent officer. He also just recently received his traffic crash certification, which consisted of over 500 hours. Now, this Advanced Law Enforcement Certificate, just to give you an idea, this is what the state requires. Obviously, associate's degree, you have to accumulate at least 36 training points. Training points are 20 hours. You get one point for every 20 hours of approved training. So that was 720 hours, just as part of it also, the two-year degree that he had to have. And you have to have at least nine years of experience. And I'm proud to present Officer Eddie McKeever with this certificate because he has definitely earned it. Eddie? Thank you. Now for the monthly report for January 2019. As you can see, we had 1,448 calls for service. You see the breakdown down below. On the incidents, we had nine total incidents. We had, one was a larceny, one was a fraud, one was a vandalism. We had three drug-related crimes. We had two hit-and-run, and we had one traffic. And the traffic, unfortunately, was a 27-year-old male who was skateboarding on East Dogwood without a helmet, and took a spill, and ultimately ended up dying up in Centerra. Wasn't a larceny, he was from Virginia Beach, but he was here with his 14-year-old cousin who lives in Kitty Hawk. So that was a pretty difficult time for the officers. We had four drug arrests for the month of January. We had five motor vehicle accidents. And out of the 62 traffic stops that the officers conducted, they wrote 18 written citations and another 23 warning citations. And zero ordinance violations for the month of January. Any questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, David. Ed Limbacher, our fire chief. Good evening, Ed.
I always hate following the chief. I can't compete with that. I don't know how you compete with him, but anyway, I'd like to just quickly echo the chief's sentiment on the skateboarding accident. We had personnel there as well, and that's very unfortunate that it happened. So, believe it or not, it does affect people in different ways, so hopefully, you know, the guy's dealing with it properly, and they've been offered counseling as well. For the month of January, Fire Department responded to 34 calls. One building fire, two patient assists, 20 EMS calls, three hazardous conditions, one gas leak, two service calls, which again, I always tell you are like tree calls and smoke detector batteries, things like that. And then there were four fire alarm activations, and one carbon monoxide detector, which wound up being a bad detector. Again, 34 for the month. Any questions?
How are we doing on our fire station?
They're moving along well on the site work. The dirt that you see piled up is obviously the dirt that they anticipated to have to take out because it had peat and things like that, part of the building process, and I think it's going very well as far as the site work in the building. So just keep moving along.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks again. Town manager, Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
And members of the council, nights reporters, report on some of the recent happenings as well as town operations. First of all, I'd like to review the recent council CIP meeting of last week. As you know, it's directed by council. Last year, the town engineers completed and submitted a preliminary design for a walking trail five foot wide, as directed, along the east side of South Dogwood Trail from the Dogwoods intersection to the Southern Shores Cemetery, linking with that existing sidewall. The walking trail plans were conveyed to each of you and posted on the town website, and are also available, hard copy, in the town conference room. And again, that is for the five-foot-wide walking trail that you directed for the town engineer to complete. The possibility of a five-foot walking trail along South Dogwood, similar to that same five-foot trail that's just been completed along East Dogwood, is being considered by your CIP committee as a possible recommendation for the upcoming fiscal year, fiscal year's capital improvements. Also being considered along with that is the possibility of more grant money from the Outer Banks Business Bureau, hopefully, to help with the cost. The condition of South Dogwood Trail itself is also being considered by the CIP committee as a possible recommendation to you in July, as a possible priority capital improvement for FY 1920. That road has been on the list, floated around on the list for several years. So as always, the CIP committee considers whatever is on the priority list and adjusts that priority list annually as it comes to you in the form of a recommendation. As the CIP committee finalizes its work and makes a recommendation based on what's before it, of course, in accordance with the council-adopted street standards, it makes that recommendation to you around April or May of each year, and it's immediately put on the town website, sent to you, and it's immediately noticed in the newsletter, and it has not come back up, per your request, until July for a separate public hearing. Included with that recommendation each year is an adjusted priority list. Each year, that priority list gets adjusted based on the conditions of streets in the town. Next CIP committee is March 7th, at 2:00 PM, and any citizen, of course, is welcome to come. It's a public meeting. Any citizens welcome to come and glean the information that's presented there and considered by the committee during its meeting. As you know, once the council adopts a plan for the next fiscal year, then funding is available from your adopted budget to actually finalize preliminary design plans and surveys for those projects that you yourself have adopted. I'm just restating all this procedure so the public clearly understands, it's the council that makes the decision on capital improvement projects that are adopted, not that committee. And by the way, yes, it is referenced as a walking trail, and that is because hopefully it could qualify, the system could qualify for some state and federal grant money using that terminology in the future. Also, by the way, the five-foot width of the walking trail that you approved for East Dogwood Trail and would be recommended to approve if you did one for South Dogwood Trail is a requirement of grant guidelines for public safety. So that's why the five-foot is there at East Dogwood. The next item I wanted to report to you on is your beach vulnerability assessment and management plan. As you know, was reported to you, was completed by the engineering consultant and sent to you on January 3rd, and was also posted on the town website that day. I reported to you last meeting that the engineering consultant would present the plan to you at your February 26th planning meeting. And also coming that day to converse with you will be representatives of Doug Carter Associates. That's the same financial consultant that has assisted Dare County, Nagshead, Kill Double Hills, Kitty Hawk, and Duck in developing their financial plans and methods for beach nourishment. So we'll have both of those entities here for you at February 26th to consider in your planning. Regarding the council-approved assessment of town buildings, we recently met with the architectural firm for a final review and comments, and they're forwarding the final assessment soon. I still have not received it. As soon as I get it, you will get it, and it will be posted, and we're still scheduled to hear from them, the architects, on February 26th for that, a presentation of that assessment. The Yopon Trail improvement is progressing and is on schedule. The Juniper Trail improvement was completed on schedule. Later in this meeting, I did request an agenda item for you to consider the circumstances of the subsequent damage to the street and a repair schedule for that damage. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions on these or other operations. Mr. Mayor?
Just want to confirm one thing for you, Peter. We're talking about the Dogwood Trail walking path. This is a preliminary drawing, it's not the final drawing?
The walking path is a preliminary drawing, yes, sir. It is ready, excuse me. That is actually just about all completed. With the southern part of it, I mean, the northern part of it, is a fully engineered preliminary design, and actually, that is more ready to go. If the council wanted to actually approve that, and it's time for approval, that could be gone, put out pretty fast for bid.
Understand. The southern part, though, from Fairway Drive.
The southern part has not been engineered.
Right. Right. Thank you.
I got a question. Peter, what's the total estimated cost for the walking path on South Dogwood? And I think y'all are also considering widening the street as well?
No, sir. Did not consider anything but information that the engineer gave the committee with regards to the street itself. I don't think the committee has considered anything at this point until it gets more information and gets more members of the committee. So that did come up in a conversation. I do not know the actual, right offhand, the total of the entire South Dogwood Trail estimation, but I can certainly email that to the council tomorrow.
Okay.
But they have not considered anything yet, other than what's on that priority list, and they'll be giving you their recommendations when they make that.
Okay. I read the minutes from that meeting, and I thought there was discussion about...
There was a discussion. Yes, sir. There was a discussion. They did not take any action for any kind of recommendation. They did discuss.
And I also thought there were some estimated costs. I can't...
In those minutes you read, is exactly what was talked about, and I don't have those in front of me, but I'll go back and resend those to you if you like. That has all the information I have that was in the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Peter. Earlier, back when they were doing Juniper Trail, you said something about completion between... Peter, earlier, back when they were doing Juniper Trail, you said something about completion between where they stopped and where they did the other section. Is there any plan to look at completing that Juniper Trail area?
I don't think that's on the CIP committee's priority list, but that's certainly something they could talk about.
And also, the intersection at, and it's just my observation, but the intersection at Palmetto seems to be maybe sinking at this point. When you look at it in the sun coming out, it seems to be leaning, so someone might want to check that.
I'll convey that to the town engineer, have him look at that.
Anything else, council? Thank you, Peter. Town attorney?
I don't have anything to report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. This time I open general public comment. Thanks, Wes. Yvonne Sternberg? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us this time to speak. I live at fifty-seven Hickory Trail. I've been here in Southern Shore since nineteen ninety-nine as a full-time resident. So, I've seen a lot of changes. First of all, I want to, I have two issues that I really want to talk about tonight. The first one, though, I want to thank you for that nice sidewalk, East Dogwood Trail. It's certainly made walking much safer for us pedestrians. But I do have a question. I've noticed that there are crosswalks from the opposite side, from Wax Myrtle and Sea Oats and Hillcrest to the sidewalk. But when you come back down through the dune, there is no such crosswalk from Woodland or from Hickory Trail over. So, those of us who are crossing over from Hickory Trail don't have that crosswalk and have to walk in the dirt or the mud, depending on what's going on at the time. So, I was just wondering why these two streets were not connected to the sidewalks as the others had been. The second thing is I want to thank you, especially those of you who responded to my email to the town about our coyote issue. When I first moved to Hickory in nineteen ninety-nine, I knew I was moving into a wooded area with mice and snakes and foxes and raccoons and squirrels and deer and so on. I had moved into their territory. I had not expected to have to deal with mice and snakes getting into my house. And honestly, that first snake in my house had me about ready to list my house on the market. But I learned how to protect my home from this type of invasion. Now, we have a different problem. That's the coyotes. They were not here when I first moved here. But in the last couple of years, that has changed, and they have now moved into my territory. It's not an issue of my replacing them. In recent months, in fact, I've heard a lot of reports of coyotes in, on South Dogwood, especially Wax Myrtle and Sea Oats. And I myself even saw one near the golf course one evening as I was coming home from a meeting. And last week, a neighbor on my street spotted one in his backyard, headed up Red Bay. So, that makes him a little close, too close for comfort. I don't have small children, but I do have a small dog. And while I don't feel afraid in the day when I walk my dog, I am fearful when I have to let her out at night. I've watched the videos that the town provided, and I recognize that this coyote issue is a difficult one because they're difficult animals. But we really need to do something for public safety. There are many people with small children and pets who don't even know there's a problem because there's been no public notices put out. My question may seem extreme, but I think it's realistic to those of us who have pets. And my question is simply this: Are we going to have to have a child attacked before anything is actually done?
Thank you. Appreciate you, Yvonne. Steve Goodus? Good evening, Steve.
Good evening to the council and mayor and the council and everyone and people. We are very proud to announce that we're gonna, we're holding the fourth Southern Shores Historic Flat Top Cottage Tour. And this will be held on April twenty-seventh on a Saturday from one to five PM. We already have fourteen structures historic, well, not designated historic, but fourteen flat top cottages out of the twenty-five that remain. So, we've got more than half of them going to be on the tour, which we're very excited about. Now, those of us who, who are proud owners of these vernacular structures, and I'm one of them, hold them very dear. And, and we feel like we've raised the level of consciousness of these structures that was once the only structure in Southern Shores that was built. Anyway, the details of this from one to five. Now, we'd like to thank Chief Cole for their help, the police have been very helpful for this. Gets a little squeaky on the few homes that are on the tour that are on the busy side of Ocean Boulevard. Once you get past the Duck Split, parking is not so much of an issue. There are several areas. And so, we're going to iron that out and have red or blue balloons for the houses on tour and red or blue balloons for the parking areas that will be. We'd like to thank Peter Rasko for placing this in the town newsletter so that the word is already out there for this to occur. The tickets are going up. They're seven dollars this year from five dollars. Gets you into all the things. The, so that people understand the proceeds, all the proceeds from this tour, go to the Outer Banks Community Foundation's Flat Top Preservation Fund. And that was established by Dawn Enoch from Mantio and others some years ago to, for the maintenance of that building, at Thirteenth Skyline Road, to hold the community foundation there. And it's a quintessential flat top, so that's where all the funds go. And that's what's going to happen. We'll have a grand time, and we look forward to it. Tickets are available at one fifty-six Wax Myrtle, that is my structure or my home, and Thirteenth Skyline Road, which is the foundation. You buy your tickets either one of those, and it lets you into all the other ones. So, we look forward to seeing everybody there. That's what I want to say. And thank everybody for their, for their assistance. And really, it's my wife's one who puts this together. I'm just sort of alone for the ride. I have to say, she's the superb one, she's the superb organizer to get it all together, and we're very, very happy about that, and thank you very much, and y'all have a good night.
Thank you, Steve. Michael Fletcher? Good evening, Michael.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Mike Fletcher. I reside at two twenty-six Woodland Drive. I'm commenting on the plans for improvement to South Dogwood Trail. Some of you may remember me. I was a chairman of the Dogwood Trails Committee. It would be inappropriate for me to speak in that capacity as the work of the committee is complete and a report was issued. I may, however, speak as a private citizen and remind the council regarding the recommendations within that report. I recently reviewed the plans for improvement of South Dogwood published at the Southern Shores website. The plan proposed a walkway to run a portion of South Dogwood. To my knowledge, the plan could date no provisions for widening of South Dogwood from its current width of approximately eighteen feet. I find the plans as published to be fully appropriate. If adopted, the plan would allow for the addition of the walkway while keeping impacts to adjacent homeowners at a minimum. I feel the walkway as proposed would benefit our community with as much as the new walkway along East Dogwood has done. Unfortunately, it has come to my attention that an alternative plan is under consideration, which would include the broadening of South Dogwood to twenty-four feet. I must state in the strongest terms possible that I deeply oppose any such expansion. In their report, the Dogwood Committee made no recommendation that included a widening of South Dogwood. Indeed, it was considered impractical and unwise to do so due to the narrowness of the right of way and the impacts to adjacent properties. Additionally, such a large change would severely impact the trees and other vegetation that Southern Shores residents rightfully treasure. Committee also example, examined safety issues in respects to adding a walkway and/or performing a road expansion. Accident data did not indicate any signs for concern with the current width. Numerous studies regarding road safety with respects to roads similar to South Dogwood were also examined. No evidence was found supporting the claim that broadening South Dogwood would improve safety. Indeed, the studies we reviewed regarding road safety similar to roads, similar to Southern Shores, South Dogwood uniformly presented exactly the opposite findings. Broadening roads similar to South Dogwood actually decreased safety by increasing speeds and potential traffic volumes. I fear the only result of the broadening of South Dogwood be to increase speed and likely increase traffic volume and the destruction of trees that currently provide the peaceful overhang and tree canopy that we all treasure. Again, I would urge the council to adopt the plan currently published on the trial website and under no condition consider broadening South Dogwood Trail. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate it. Greg Fruchy, is that right? Thank you. Good evening.
I'm Greg Fruchy. I reside at twenty-one Foxwood Circle. And am I to understand that item two B, I think it is, and has been struck and is tabled? Okay. I just wanted to make a quick comment about fear, really. We exist in a society right now where fear seems to overtake a lot of people's actions and their passion, and we have to be careful, I think, because fear feeds upon itself. Fear creates more fear. That's the function of fear. And if we enter into a decision about something from fear, if I say I hate something, and I don't like to use that word. If I say I hate, I am who I am, and so I become hate, and hate will fuel a decision-making process, which could then affect multiple people. Where I'm going with this is the maximum size that we're talking about in Southern Shores and limiting bedrooms and those kinds of discussions. And, and, you know, if the state of North Carolina says you can't limit the number of bedrooms, then if we, from fear, try to find a way to limit the number of bedrooms through septic or density or whatever you want to call it, then we're still reacting in a fearful way because we don't want something to change the way we don't think it should change. And I agree. But I love Southern Shores. You look at a Google map image of Southern Shores, and you expand away from that, and you see the entire Outer Banks, and we see the beauty that we have here. It's gorgeous, and there's so, there's so many restrictions already in place, thirty percent lot coverage, wider setbacks, setbacks, that create the environment that we have. So, to tell someone, and I'm not talking about the oceanfront, really, per se. I'm talking about those of us that live here year-round, those of us that live in places in Southern Shores where we, we just, we just want to create a home place for our family. As a body of people, to look at somebody that lives in Southern Shores and says, you cannot build a house more than X amount of square feet, or you cannot have X amount of people in your house, is a fear-based decision. If a family is a large family, and they want to have children and grandchildren there for Thanksgiving and Christmas and the holidays, that's their deal. They should be able to do that. So, I just would ask that we are careful not to make decisions from fear because that fear will create more fear. Uncomplete.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Tricia Farrenhold? Good evening, Tricia.
Tricia Farrenhold, sixty-nine Ocean Boulevard here in Southern Shores. Hello, council. Hello, everyone. I'm speaking on two things this evening in this section. One is I am afraid of coyotes. Yes, that is fear-based. I am. And let me tell you why. Three years ago, I was in my backyard, and one rushed past me, and I live semi-oceanfront, sixty-nine Ocean Boulevard. It's not the area they were talking about. This is eight tenths of a mile from this door. I thought it was a big old fox. A friend said, no, Tricia, that is not a fox. That is a coyote. I have heard them howling, not near me. I know they are on the bike path that goes from the back of Chickahawke and ends up at Wax Myrtle. And there's the old dried-out bed of a pond, and there are lots of them there. I will not go there. I will not go on the bike path that has been provided for me by my dollars of taxes because I am afraid of coyotes. I have little dogs. I don't bring them. I rent to people, and Southern Shores rentals do. We, we say we're happy about the fox, the deer, the blue heron, but we do not mention the amenity of the coyotes. We know that there was a black bear that swam across to Martin's Point, because I was told that at Southern Shores by one of the gentlemen that's a realtor there. And he said, but it had the good sense to turn around and go back to Currituck. And I would like these coyotes to go somewhere else. Do it humanely, but please do something because I don't want them to kill all the deer and the fox and everything else. Second point, this afternoon, I came down, I am, we are part of the fear-based people who are afraid of many hotels. And I understand I cannot have the sign in the easement, but it seems as we drive through, the easement does change depending lot to lot, and I understand that, too. If you're on the oceanfront, it's only about fifteen feet away, but on my side, it's about twenty-five. My poor sign can't be seen from the road, basically, because it's in the bushes that I thought were mine. I maintain it. I mow it. I pick up sticks on it, but I can't put a temporary sign on it. I notice, though, realtors have their signs right there, house numbers, house names, construction companies have their signs there, building permits have their signs there, election signs are there, no drilling signs are there, save our trees signs are there. But I can't put something up for a limited amount of time. So, I would just like you to look at that situation, too, if you would. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anna Schwermuth? Evening, Anna.
Good evening, council members. Very interesting. Tricia spoke on my topic. I didn't expect that. I would like to address the, what I consider to be the targeting of the yard signs. In the past two newsletters, there have been notices that they are at risk of being removed by the town. I have to say that I find this warning to be disappointing, disheartening, and altogether petty on the part of the town. As Tricia just noted, there are multiple signs in the public right-of-way. And in the thirty years that I have lived here, and I have a history going back fifty years, I have never, I cannot recall ever having such hostility by the town directed at town residents for ideological beliefs in yard signs. And I'm not naive enough to believe that all of a sudden, you're warning about signs in the public right-of-way because it's just struck you that that's a good thing to mention? It didn't have anything to do with the fact that the mini hotel sign went up a week before the first notice came out in the newsletter? I believe that this is not an issue of aesthetics or traffic safety, which is what typically underlies a sign ordinance, and that you're maybe even, Ben may disagree, getting a little bit close to the First Amendment here. But I would like, and I think the public has a right to know, why you are doing this? What is the intent, Mr. Mayor? I assume you authorized the notice that was in the newsletter. Why have you decided now, after so many years, to target yard signs in the public right-of-way? Not the save the trees, not the election signs, not the subcontractor signs, not the real estate signs, not the no drilling signs. It's not coincidental that it's the no mini hotel signs. I'd like to know why, and I'd also like to know what process you have in mind. Are you actually going to go to section one dash six and issue citations to people for violations? And if you are, are you going to do that even-handedly? And are you going to issue them to the real estate people and to the no drilling folks? Or are you going to target no mini? Or are you going to target no-many-hotels signs in that respect as well? I think it's extremely petty and not becoming, frankly, for a town to get to micromanage at this level. I think it's hostile, frankly, and it is a matter of political speech, ideological speech.
Thank you, Anna. Natalie Drummond. Good evening, Natalie.
Good evening. My name is Natalie Drummond. I'm a resident of 302 Wax Myrtle Trail, and as a longtime resident of Southern Shores, I am deeply concerned about the coyote issue in our town. I personally have encountered three coyotes, two of which were actually in my driveway. The other one, I was walking my dog and came out of the end of the driveway. It was about 15 feet away. I started yelling, and it didn't move. So, an animal that could be so brazen as to not even be scared of humans, I mean, we really have a problem. I have small dogs and a cat. I'm concerned for my outdoor cat, and I've talked to numerous neighbors who have lost cats to coyotes. I mean, at least they've had the cat there one day, and then the coyote shows up the next day, and there's no longer a cat. So we are making an assumption, but I think it's a pretty wise assumption that we're losing a lot of small animals. Someone addressed the deer, the foxes. I mean, if you look around, they're gone. We don't, I mean, there aren't nearly as many as there were when I moved here almost 20 years ago. I would like to ask that the town consider some sort of coyote management program. The town of Naggs Head has acted proactively on this, and they, well, I guess it was actually reactively, but they did react to their citizens' concerns, and last year, they hired a trapper who trapped 17 coyotes last year. I've talked to town management this year. They've already trapped four. They've had no adverse effects as far as people's pets, or any children, anything like that. It's been completely safe, and they've handled these in a humane way, the coyotes that they have trapped and disposed of. So I would like to ask that the town would consider that. I do appreciate the responses from a couple of the council members on this when I sent an email a couple of weeks ago. One of the things that they mentioned was that we don't have vacant land. The town doesn't own it. But there is vacant land owned by the Southern Shore Civic Association and the Chickahawke Property Owners Association, and the town could approach them to ask for permission to use that land. Also, the town of Emerald Isle have been doing some research, and they have actually implemented a program that includes trapping on the land owned by the town, but it also enables the residents to hire private trappers to actually come and trap and euthanize coyotes off-site on their property. So if a private property owner says, "Yeah, sure, I want to do it," they've given a list. You can look at the website. They've got six different trappers that are licensed in that area. They work with the police department. They, if a homeowner invites them over, they go over there and they take care of the issue. So there are solutions. I understand that this is a statewide problem, but, you know, a lot of people say, "Well, let nature take its course." Well, that'd be fine if we lived in a rural community, but we don't. This is a resort community, and we have spent millions on sidewalks and streetlights just to make it hospitable to tourists, and we can't even live in a safe environment where we're not concerned for the safety of our pets and ourselves.
Thank you, Natalie.
Good evening. Tommy Carroll, 77 East Dogwood Trail. I'll start off with a compliment, which might be a surprise to some of you. Wes, Peter, the sidewalk on the mayor, the council, everyone involved, the sidewalk on East Dogwood Trail was done beautiful. It was done as planned, as promised, and they did a beautiful job on it. Absolutely beautiful. And whoever I missed in that process, I even saw Joe Anil off on the sidewalk, and I thanked him. He did, the job was well-done, very well-done. Comment to the gentleman on the fear base and hate, well said, well said. But I think there's a time, there's a time as parents, as adults, that we need to pay attention to what we're going to hand off to our kids. In my opinion, not based on fear, not based on hate, there comes a time when this generation, and generations before us, were abusing the land to put, again, in my opinion, not fear-based, not hate-based, to put a piece of, and to the point where some of the guys from the company that threw in, are friends of mine, there comes a time when that becomes an abuse of that natural resource, and that's the ballpark on it. But I appreciate your comments. I'd love to discuss it with you, but, and again, remember, that's residential, okay? You look at those plans, that's nowhere close to being, it's meant what it's meant to be, and it's not really residential. Good points, well said. A comment on the discussions about widening Dogwood Trail. I just have one question. I can't say it as well as Mike did, and he covered all my, he stole my thunder, but I would ask, based on the amount of time it took to get the task force selection committee together, and the task force together, and all the work they did, and all the digging into talking to the town and the surveys, it was very obvious, very obvious in their report, what the town wants, and what the people of the town. I want to ask, who even brought up, and for what reason would you bring up widening Dogwood Trail? Where does that come from? And absolutely, absolutely can't be from a safety issue, because there's just too much data out there. Pre-2004, they're thinking that wider roads were safety, but I've done all this homework, and it's been discussed. You widen roads on routes like 64, where people are using those cellphones, and that's proven, where there's room for correction, and there's room to run off and not hit the trees, but you come to residential areas, widening roads, increase speed, and safety goes down the tube. Thank you.
Joe Van Geesen. Evening, Joe.
Evening, town council, city, town staff, and citizens. One more vote, or one more opinion regarding the widening of Dogwood, South Dogwood. All the points that have been made previously have been established in the task force report by many commenters over the years at these town council meetings regarding the impact of widening on increased traffic speed and inverse effect on safety. One of the things that I think would merit consideration is looking at the cost of replacing the road in kind of admittedly with the current standards we use with the improved road bed and et cetera, but not widening it, and a similar cost estimate for a widened road. And I think you will see, it's not 10% more because it's 10% or 20% wider, it's going to be astronomically more expensive, because in order to make it wider, you're going to have to do a whole lot more excavation, a whole lot more engineering work. And I'm really, I've attended a lot of these capital improvement meetings, and I got to say, a large number of the people on this committee are wrapped around the finger of the town engineer. I would like to see some independent thought, like I've been contributing in all of my comments to the council, to the capital improvement committee, and I'm astounded that one of the former members of the task force, and who is now on that committee, is an advocate, a radical advocate for widening the road, and I think that's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Steve Weeks.
Before you speak, sir, I'm sorry. Did you have something to say, Mr. Van Geesen?
I said, "I..."
Well, you were pointing at me, mouthing something.
That's enough. Thank you.
Mayor, council?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for...
Apologize.
Steve.
I just want to talk about the coyote situation. My wife came running into the house the other day, out of breath, got a little dotson, and she was out walking. Two doors down, she noticed these two dogs, she thought. Then she realized they were coyotes. They were about 25 feet from her. She was scared. I've lived in this town for about 30 years. I walk my dogs, my children have walked my dogs. It's not getting safe out there anymore. We've got a small problem right now, councilman. There's a few of these coyotes out here, but you know, they multiply, just like cats. And before you know it, there's going to be hundreds, and they're going to get hungry when they kill all the deer, and they kill the other animals. They're going to get hungry, and they're going to go after us. Our children first, you know, the smaller the better. We've got a problem. We need to deal with it, and that's what I encourage you to do. I'm not saying that we should kill these coyotes. I think they should be relocated, but something has to be done, so I can feel comfortable when I tell my 10-year-old grandson, ask him if he wants to go walk the dogs. You know, I'm going to spend Drift Trail, and it's real, you know, kind of, there's no houses down towards the end, which is where we walk our dogs. So you can imagine, there's woods all around that could be on top of us any minute, and that's what we feel. We're scared. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Susan Stroud, is that part, is that correct? Good evening, Susan.
I live at 231 Wax Myrtle Trail, and I'm speaking about the coyote problem. Everything that I had planned to say has been covered already, so this will be short. My dog in this fight is actually a dog. We have a small one, and we're going to get another puppy this spring. I have not seen a coyote. I can't stand here and say that I have, but my next-door neighbor has, and he's the one that's lost the kittens, the cats that Natalie was talking about. I don't feel safe walking my dog, and usually I do in the spring and summer. To avoid the heat, I go at night, after supper, when it's getting dark. I wouldn't dare do that now. I've always, we've always had dogs since we've lived here. We've been here 15 years. When we came here, there were foxes, there were rabbits. There are no more. There's still plenty of deer, but I am, I'm fearful. I am, and I am not for myself, but I am for my pets, and I do think this problem needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Philip Stroud. Good evening, Philip.
Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I live on 231 Wax Myrtle Trail, and just as some background, I guess I'm what you might consider or called a country boy. We, my family lived in Rocky Mount, North Carolina, for 37 years prior to coming here, in the end of 2003. At that time, as has already been said, so I won't belabor the point, this Southern Shores, we had relatives that were, had lived here, now passed away, and there was animals, bob whites, quails, rabbits, everything, which of course don't exist anymore. But I guess what I would like to say is this, I'm, we lived on what's called a reservoir area in the Rocky Mount community. It was wooded, but when we had a problem with predatory animals, dangerous animals, whatever, as the lady talked about snakes, whatever it might be, I didn't have to worry about coming to a town council to ask about what to do about it. We were accustomed to handling our own problems. But since I moved here, I've had to get accustomed to doing things quite differently. I really don't like being here, having to ask you to do something about this problem, but I have no choice. And as has already been said, I know we, as a community, pride ourselves in the way things are handled, the looks, the aesthetics, various regulations that have already been mentioned. All these things make our community beautiful, and hopefully, people want to come here to live. But if you've got to worry about, as some of you have already mentioned, letting your dog outside at night, prior to, say, going to bed, for fear of him being killed by a coyote, this is ridiculous. And all this beautiful community that we've managed to come up with at this point, what good is it if I've got to go spend X number of dollars, aggravation, trouble, to build fences around my property? I don't like fences, but what choice do I have unless something is done about it? So I'm here tonight, as everyone else has mentioned, the coyote problem, to ask, again, don't like the fact that I've got to ask you to do it, but obviously, as Natalie pointed out, we've seen problems before with other areas, and it's been handled. So I would certainly hope that as much tax money as we pay here in Southern Shores, that it would actually, that you would do something about it immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That closes out the sign-ups on this sheet for tonight.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a, try to facilitate a piece of public information real quick in y'all's agenda? Just wanted to comment that, as council knows, and I want to make sure the public knows, that the most current forum for public comments on possible capital street improvements, including any that might come up on South Dogwood, is this council's Capital Infrastructure Improvement Committee. And the next meeting, again, is Thursday, March 7th, at 2:00 p.m. South Dogwood Trail Improvement has been historically on the priority list for review for several years. As you know, as I said before, the council adopts the projects, the council has adopted a set of street standards, and there will be nothing coming out of the Capital Improvement Committee, except in accordance with those street standards. Again, it was discussed by some of the members the other day as to the different scenarios for wits. I know what the debate is, and there's no question about it. The debate is either keep it like it is, don't do anything, or widen it in accordance with the street standards, which the council already has adopted. So the debate is, does the council amend those, or does it do nothing on South Dogwood, et cetera? But I would just say to you and the public that the only, the most current forum is the CIP Committee. This is not before the council, and won't be until that committee makes a recommendation. And again, the next meeting is March 7th at 2:00 p.m.
Thank you, Peter. That's good, know that. I think the public should know that as well.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment, please?
Sure, Jim.
I think that, over the last few months, there's been at least three occasions where I've been interrupted while I was speaking during council comments, or during deliberations up here, and while frustrating as that is, I see no reason for me to tolerate vulgarities being mouthed at me from the audience and highlighted. So that's why I spoke out here a moment ago.
Mr. Mayor, I've been accused of speaking vulgarities, and I did not do that. I did point to him so he would know that my comments about both advocacy for the authority for widening the road was by Mr. Carter, but I did not come and say vulgarities, and I resent the intonation that I did. He is not ordered...
Joe, we're all getting a little bit of a word here. I think that's enough. We're not here to discuss that.
Thank you. A little different subject, folks. Just to bring, just to give you an update, last Tuesday, the 29th, I traveled to Raleigh, met with and spoke to Senator Steinberg, Representative Hennig, a number of others at a meeting there. By the way, Senator Steinberg was most gracious, allowed me... By the way, uh, Senator Steinberg was most gracious, uh, allowed me and a lawyer, a lawyer from the League of Municipalities, or not, two hours of his time. I went there to seek support and sponsorship of our resolution, twenty nineteen oh one, as a local bill. This is our effort to try to let Southern Shores be exempted from the, uh, state statute would, would, wouldn't allow us to control, remember bedrooms and occupants in our, in our homes. And that was essentially why I went to, to the, to the meeting, was to try to, try to appeal to them to, uh, to give us consideration, not to impact the overall bill itself, but just, just to protect Southern Shore's interest. There was resistance to this, this request by the General Counsel for the home builders. Uh, an attorney for the League of Municipalities, Rose Williams, spoke on our, our behalf and kind of clarified to the, to the members there that what I was, what I was trying to accomplish. After much discussion, unfortunately, the Senator and Representative Hanning decided they would not support our resolution. While I was disappointed at the outcome, I'm hopeful we can address the issue in a positive way through our own actions. Perhaps a, a good thing that we could do as a, as a, as a, as individuals who live here, is to write a letter to Senator Steinberg and Representative Hanning, asking, they, they rethink their earlier, uh, decision not to support our resolution. It may or may not help, but it certainly can't hurt us if they hear from a number of our residents. Copies of our original letter and our resolution are both available in Town Hall. I, you're welcome to use, uh, as much of my wording as you'd like, but you're probably better off to use your own writing, your own, uh, writing for your letter, your own words for your letter. Um, I thank you for your time on that, on this matter. And I appreciate your help if you can see, see your way clear to do just what I asked, to write a letter to Stein, to Senator Steinberg.
At this time, I'll, uh, ask Mr. Gallup to open the public hearing of consideration of ZTA eighteen oh nine. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a legislative public hearing. There is no sworn testimony. This is a, uh, public hearing that first we'll hear from staff, which I, I think from talking to Mr. Haskett, that will be me. Um, so I'll call on myself to give a, a bit of an overview of what the ordinance is before the Council is about. And then we'll hear from members of the public. Um, I'll go through the list that Ms. Kane is picking up first, and then I will ask for, um, people to raise their hands and, uh, make sure that everybody has a chance to speak on this issue if they'd like. So I'll open the public hearing for consideration of ZTA eighteen dash oh nine, which is a text amendment amending, uh, Town Code Section thirty-six dash one thirty-two. Thank you, Ms. Kane. The, what you have in the, in the packet, which some of you may have, some of you may not, but what Council has are three different ordinance proposals. The first one in the packet is, um, ZTA eighteen dash oh seven, which, I mean, which is ZTA da, eighteen dash oh nine, which makes some changes to ZTA eighteen oh seven, which was adopted back in September to limit the number of, um, limit the development of non-conforming lots within the town. And ZTA eighteen oh seven was a very broad limitation, and the Council ran into some situations that they felt, and that ultimately the Planning Board felt, were, um, situations that they did not want, that you did not want, encapsulated in that broad closing the door, is what I would call it, of development of fifty-foot and other non-conforming lots. Essentially, what you were targeting was the issue of people redeveloping an area of the town by taking down structures that were on lots that had, on parcels that had multiple underlying smaller, typically fifty-foot lots, as Frank's, or, which is, which stick is it, David's stick, had, uh, developed the, the town in. While leaving the capability for single lots, as it had always been, that weren't in the same ownership to be constructed. So ZTA eighteen oh seven included the first exception to that, or eighteen oh nine, excuse me, included the first exception to that, which flip through and get to the right one, which would have allowed a lot adjacent to land under the same ownership, which is locate, located on a, on, adjacent to land, which is under the same ownership, which is located and on which is located in an existing single-family dwelling, and the adjacent land is made up of no more than two lots, all of which are non-conforming. That's the initial eighteen oh nine. And what that means, what that allowed for was, um, there were exam, at least two examples, probably more in the town, where someone had two non-conforming lots that they had built a house upon, and through time or, or whatever, had purchased another non-conforming lot next door. For, typically for investment or some other non, not to be used with their primary property. And what this would allow is the exception for that person to sell and develop that lot that they had purchased that way. But it wouldn't allow someone who had ten or fifteen lots. It had to be two non-conforming lots with a house that crossed the property line. So it's pretty narrow for what's next door to that single conforming, single non-conforming lot that could be built upon. Planning Board looked at that and ultimately also added another provision, which would add very similar situation, but the two lots where the house is located had already been, had already been recombined to be conforming, which I think is a, is a good idea, because your overall concept has moved toward more conforming lots. And for the folks in the audience who haven't been here for the ten other meetings where we've talked about this, conforming lots are lots that meet current reg, town regulations, which are a hundred foot wide. So over time, as, the, the general concept is that you reduce non-conformities. And the way you do that is through ordinance provisions. And the town's provisions had been, um, the way they were worded didn't maximize the reduction of non-conformities in the past. But the second, so the se, there was a second, um, exception added, and that's shown in ZTA eighteen oh nine dash PB, which is a revision that's in the, um, in your packet. And that is the one, that revision is the one that was voted on by the Planning Board and sent to you as a recommendation. In addition to those changes, there are also a couple of minor changes to the, um, the very complicated definitions of affiliate and ownership to include, you had a very broad family ownership concept that made ownership include lots of different family, including siblings and lineal descendant, lineal descendants and parents. But the way it was worded, if they put it in the right legal entities and different family members own different controlling interests, then ultimately it was under different ownership. The modification here is an attempt to add some familial concept to the control of legal entities such as an LLC or a corporation, such that they would fall under the same ownership rules as the typical family, so that you couldn't use that as a loophole. The only other change is, uh, really a, a typographical change to strike under the same ownership under Section two A, where it appears twice in the same sentence. So I think there's gonna be some question as to how ZTA eighteen oh nine PB is what's before you from the Planning Board. I'm gonna have Ms. Maury speak from the Planning Board's perspective and, and what they talked about.
Let me, let me ask you a question first, Ben. So what you're saying, if I understand you correctly, the only one of the three copies we have in here that we're considering passed by the Planning Board would be eighteen oh nine PB.
That is the recommendation of the Planning Board.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. And eighteen oh seven, I can't remember if it was directed by you or directed for, was their initial review of it, or eighteen oh nine, excuse me, the, the first one in the packet. I can't remember if it was directed by you or if it was, Wes, can you tell me?
It was, uh, Council adopted eighteen oh seven, uh, in September. In all adoption, they had consensus that the Planning Board, uh, continued consideration and, and recommended.
So eighteen oh nine was something that the Planning Board asked for, the initial one, and then they've made changes, and their final recommendation is eighteen oh nine PB, which they voted on at the last meeting. So it's a little complicated to follow, but we wanted to include everything in here so that you could see the history.
So my question still is, we're only considering PB?
Uh.
Are we holding a, a public hearing on eighteen oh nine PB? Cause we've got three copies, and they're basically the same, but there's some changes in each and every one.
I, I think PB is the one that's probably before you, yes.
Okay. So PB is the one before us.
Yeah. But I think you could make the changes to go back to oh seven as well.
Right.
I mean, I mean to, to go back to oh nine. I keep, sorry about confusing those, but I get odd numbers in my head, and I've got oh seven and oh nine wrapped up. If one of them was an even number, it'd be easier to remember, I think.
Eighteen oh nine?
Yeah, but I, I think.
PB.
Yeah, but I think PB is what you're probably considering, but you could make changes yourself to go back. I don't think that you would have a problem going back to oh nine as it originally was in the Planning Board. You wouldn't have to send that back to them. But if you made any other substantive changes between what's in front of you, I think that's when you would have to send it back to the Planning Board. But you could adopt oh nine PB if that was the motion that someone wanted to make after the public hearing.
Well, and a follow-up to Gary's question, how do we refer to this subject tonight? There you go.
You refer to it to the ordinance that's in front of you, that it's got a label at the top, top right-hand corner, and that's what you're adopting.
Well, I've got two eighteen, I, I'm like, I've got two eighteen oh nines.
One, one of them's revised.
I've got an eighteen oh nine PB, and I've got two eighteen oh nines.
Yeah, the second eighteen oh nine has revised written above it, so it's technically
We're discussing eighteen oh nine PB. If you want to discuss something else, you can. That's what we're trying to.
No, I'm just trying to get clear on what, we've got three copies, and what are we doing?
Right.
Eighteen oh nine PB is the recommendation from the Planning Board.
Thank you, sir. So, and that's what we will refer to here?
Yes.
In our discuss, that's what the public hearing is on?
Yes.
Good evening again.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, Mr., all the members of the Council and, and Ben. I think we can all agree that the subject of non-conforming lots is a complex problem. It's even so complex, our town attorney is having difficulty, is challenged trying to explain it to us all. We've been working on this since September. It's now February. It is indeed, uh, it has been an iterative process. You know, we, we had oh seven, then we had oh nine, then we revised oh nine, and now we have oh nine PB. So I can completely understand your confusion. It's, it's been an iterative process. It's because it's a complex problem. And, you know, uh, we're doing the best we can. I can tell you from the Planning Board perspective, we're in agreement that, uh, some of the things that are in the staff report, uh, that we want to, uh, to the, to the highest degree that we can, we want to reduce the number of non-conforming lots. That's what we're trying to do. It seems that no matter what we do, someone is probably going to figure out a way to get what they want and get around whatever zoning text amendment that we make. We can't, we can't worry about that. All we can do is try to make it what we've got better, and that's what we've done. So, you know, without any belaboring of, of any more details than what Ben has already done, um, just from a Planning Board perspective, we feel like what we've done is the best we can with what we had. I, I do think that, um, there may be a, an approach that's more holistic, instead of doing this little, uh, narrow approach of, of addressing one problem at a time. And I hope that we can figure out a way to solve what, the problem that we have, uh, in a more holistic fashion. What that is, I don't know, but I think there, there should be a better way to get where we need to be. I'll be happy to answer questions.
Was the Planning Board, what was the Planning Board's vote on recommending oh nine PB?
It was four to one.
Four to one.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a question. Uh, what's the significance of January first, twenty fifteen?
You'll have to ask our attorney.
Where'd that number come from?
That is in the timeframe where the, this issue started coming up. And it is prior to, um, the second, the second exception that is in oh nine PB is directed toward at least one person who has raised it, who their recombination occurred in July of two thousand and fifteen to create the conforming lot. So I took a date that was far enough back to encompass that, that was around the time that we started taking, um, taking on this issue and dealing with it. And January one seemed like a good day, instead of, uh, February fifteenth or thirteenth, or, you know, starting in the beginning of the year or the beginning of a fiscal year is kind of a common timeframe. But I, I really took it back to encompass the timeframe for the, the, um, situation that was trying to be dealt with. If it hadn't gone back far enough, it wouldn't have encompassed that.
I ask you another question. Why are we changing ordinances to accommodate unusual situations constantly? Everybody has a, a different situation. Does that mean we're gonna have an ordinance for every situation, or we'll have one ordinance and then have a process for dealing with exceptions?
That's your, that's the Council's prerogative to do that.
That's why it's so confusing. I mean, every time we discuss this, there's a new version, and we're trying to meet somebody's requirement. And don't get me wrong, if people have a requirement, I understand their concern. But if we just keep changing ordinances every time there's an exception, we'll be doing it from now on.
I don't disagree. I, I think we're dealing with, staff did this at the, and the Planning Board took this on at the direction of the Council to deal with some situations that had come up, that were outliers, that the Council did not want to be encompassed by the very broad provisions of eighteen oh seven that was adopted in September. So I think if the Council wants to limit that, then it's, the Council's prerogative to do that. I, I think you run into the, some exceptions that may be worth granting so that you allow us a limited number of people who weren't part of what the problem you were initially trying to deal with was, but that's certainly your prerogative to do it however you like.
I, I think that one of the Planning Board members put it very clearly. We started off looking at one house on two lots, tearing it down and selling those two lots as individuals, but we strayed to encompass so much more. And the Planning Board, it was Mr. O'Neill, as I recall, he was saying, let's get back to what our original mission was. Mission's my word, goal was his, I think. Yeah, in other words, recombine those two lots if you're gonna tear it, the house down or sell it or whatever. I guess tear it down, yeah.
Yeah, and I think you had at one time, like you, there's a lot of different things we've considered, and I can't remember them all, but I think in the fall, when we were considering eighteen oh seven, you had something else before you that would have limited it just to that. But there was, and ultimately the Council passed eighteen oh seven, which was a very broad limitation on, on, on the, um, development of non-conforming lots without recombin, combination.
Right.
So by passing that, you know, if there are, if there are outliers that the Council doesn't want part of it, either you've got to go back and change it wholly, as Ms. Maury mentioned, or you've got to make exceptions. mentioned, or you've got to make exceptions to what you've got, um, and what you adopted in September, which is what the oh nine PB that's before you tonight is about. I mean, it's like a lot of ordinances I've said this for, there, there's a lot of ways to skin the cat.
Yeah.
But you, you start from somewhere, you start from where you are, and you go from there, um, different tasking, and I would come up with a different ordinance.
Yeah.
So, but that's where we are tonight.
So can you tell me, how many lots does that affect, that date, January first, two thousand fifteen, will that affect as we move forward?
I know of one, otherwise I don't know what, if there are anymore.
So we're doing it for one lot?
I don't know. I mean, at least one lot. I, I'm assuming that there could be more, but I have no idea of, of any one but one.
Do you know that lot?
Yes. Do you wanna know that lot?
Yes, I do.
It's Mr. Love's lot.
So we have a, an exception for one lot? Okay, just, just check, that's good.
Well, the other exception applied to only two lots that I know of, maybe three.
So if you take that date out, does that, how many lots does that affect?
Uh, the likelihood would be more, but I don't know the numbers. We could ask Wes what the number would be, we can look into that, that wasn't part of what we were doing. We were drafting what we were asked to draft.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Yes, my understanding was this was not addressing one lot, this was addressing a number of lots.
I didn't say it wasn't addressing a number of lots. All I know is of one lot that it, that the second part of, um, oh nine PB addresses.
Okay, cause is it not illegal to make a variance or, I mean, a zoning change to address one lot?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay, but this is, but, but I think it's very important, Councilman, that we get clear.
That's right.
Is this addressing more than one lot?
The whole thing, as it, as it sits, I know addresses at least three different parcels. One part I know addresses one lot and another, you know, one lot associated with another parcel, and the other part addresses at least two other. But I don't know, I don't know how many other lots are out there that they address. It's not something I was tasked to do.
I understand. Ben, let me ask you this. For those people that have two, two or three lots you're talking about that are exceptions, are there other ways that they can, uh, uh, meet their requirements, like through the variance process? Can they do that to?
Maybe.
Maybe.
And that, variance process is a quasi judicial process, that they've gotta show that they hit the provision, that they, they've gotta present evidence that shows that they meet the standards of the, of the, um, ordinance. And I, I wouldn't, I mean, if you, if I were their attorney and I didn't have this text amendment pass, I would try a variance.
Yeah.
But I don't know that, I can't tell you today whether or not it would pass or not.
No, I know you can't, but there is, there is a process, though.
Yep, there is.
That they could use. And if their case is compelling, then there's a chance they could get satisfaction.
Right, and let me correct something that Mr. Connors mentioned. I think he was probably thinking of spot zoning. Spot zoning is a map amendment process.
Yeah.
Where you have to deal with it for map amendments, text amendments, don't get into the spot zoning consideration. And the fact that I'm aware of only one doesn't mean there's only one, and doesn't mean that other situations couldn't be created that still fell into the same category. There's definitely the possibility in the second provision, that's the second exception that's added in the amendment, for others to fall into that category. Because they could have a broader number of lots, they combine them all into one, and there's a house on them, and then they can sell one at the end of the, at the end of the group. That's what that second provision would allow. But it wouldn't allow to sell all of the individual lots, it would just allow to sell one at the end.
This is bringing back a lot of memories from the planning board discussions, because the point that's being made, I think, pretty clear is that there's just a lot of unknowns. And we've had situations come through the door that we didn't know about until they were brought to our attention. So that's why this has happened the way it's happened so far, and who knows how many more of these situations are, there are. We don't know.
Yeah, and one of the.
That's, that's kinda where we're stuck.
And one other aspect of this is that you have a procedure in your ordinances where someone, not only could they file for a variance from the planning, from the Board of Adjustment, the planning board, they could also file for an amendment that would do the same thing and bring it back before you.
That's right.
Um, and essentially what you're doing in this case is you were, you had the planning board considering it, and some people who could've filed for, to seek, you know, filed a, uh, application for an amendment, were able to come to the planning board and point out that these are problems that we would like you to address, and this is what the planning board has addressed. So it's a similar situation to someone filing an application, they just got involved in the process when it was being discussed and were able to, to, um, point out that where they felt they were an outlier and that they should be addressed. You have any other questions? Great, Mr. Mayor?
Just, just wanna make one comment. I think, I think the planning board and the council have been trying very hard to make this an equitable and fair, uh, ZTA. In other words, we can't solve everyone's problems, but, but the things we can address that are, that are obvious, we need to be, we felt we needed to be addressing. As Elizabeth said, we can't answer all the questions, we can't solve all the problems, but we can address those things that we can do something about, and, and they're, they're outliers, they're one of a kind. Do we just push them aside and say, it's your problem? And I don't think that's a fair way to handle it. That's why we spent as much time on as we have, that's why I've been to as many planning board meetings I've been, been attending. I think we have to do all we can to be, to be orderly and to do it in an appropriate way, but also to be fair. That's all I have to say about it right now.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Maury, you done?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, we said, I said at the beginning that the goal was to try to reduce the number of non-conforming lots, but on, on the other half of what I should've said was, basically, similar to what Mayor Bennett said, is we wanna do it in as fair a way as we can, because we do not want to leave somebody high and dry.
Or, or impose hardships on somebody, having to hire a town attorney and come in and fight to get for something that could've been simple for us to adjust and reconcile.
Yes, sir, exactly. That's what we're trying to avoid.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, um, Mr. Hurd, Craig Hurd?
This may be a little, Craig Hurd, Seals Trail. This may be a little redundant, but I'm totally confused, and hopefully when I go through this, you can help my confusion. My wife and I bought our home on Seals Trail twenty-two years ago in nineteen ninety-seven. A year later, the lot next to us went up for sale. Uh, it looked like a good investment to us, we bought it. This lot is twenty thousand square feet, nearly half an acre, and measures ninety feet by two hundred and twenty-five feet. And for the past twenty-one years, we've been paying taxes on it and watching it increase in value. Couple of weeks ago, I found out that this is a non-conforming lot. I didn't know what a non-conforming lot was, but it didn't sound good. So I got with the planning folks in Southern Shores, and I found out two things. One is, I can't sell it, and I can't build on it. And number two is, it was always non-conforming. And I thought, how dumb can you be to have bought this lot and be paying taxes on it all these years? And it can't be sold, and it can't be built on. And then I started thinking of a few items that had happened in the past. One is, the realtor who had sold this lot is an old-time realtor in Southern Shores. I respect him, I know him, and I trust him. He didn't know it was non-conforming. The lawyer that I used is a Southern Shores attorney, his offices are here in Southern Shores. He advised me to get it checked for septic capability, which I did. So he was looking out for my best interest. He didn't know it was non-conforming. The house next to this lot was built a year before we bought our home. It's built on a ninety-foot lot. No problem there. All the lots on down to thirteenth to twelfth avenue are ninety-foot lots. As I say, I, and I've been paying taxes on this for twenty-one years, as though it were a viable building lot. It's valued at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If you can't sell it and you can't build on it, it ain't worth a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I, a couple of weeks ago, I talked to the planning board when they had their meeting. And I, I brought up some of these things, and I said, why is this non-conforming? And they said, because you own the house next to it. And I said, do you mean if I own a house one lot away, then it wouldn't be a problem? They said, right. And then I said, well, how about in a couple of years, my wife and I decide to downsize, and we sell our house? Then we don't longer own the house next to it. Then what happens? And they said, well, you can sell it, but you'll have to wait five years to do it. I'm at a loss, I, I don't know where I stand, I don't know what's going on, but it makes absolutely no sense to me, what's going on here. And I'm hoping that this council can revisit this and put some sense to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr..
Thank you, Craig. You see what I mean, folks? It's very confusing. Thanks again, Craig.
And actually, I'm usually the most confused on this, but I'll say that Mr. Hurd actually understands the situation pretty well. Surprise, you know, he, he's gonna surprise himself, cause he says he doesn't, but I think he understands the situation pretty well. But that is also, he's an example of an exception that is not covered by what's before you tonight, but the planning board's discussion was that he's, his situation is an exception that they would like to consider in the future. So you can do something with that as part of this, as, separate from this, however you wanna deal with it, but he would not be, the way it's worded tonight, the exceptions that are before you tonight in eighteen oh nine PB would not sell, solve his issue. That, that doesn't mean it needs, doesn't need to be solved. That's up to y'all whether or not you ultimately solve it. But the planning board's consideration was to ultimately consider that as a, as another exception.
Mr. Hurd's lot is not, is not the only lot like that. There are a number of lots in our town that are over two thou, over twenty thousand square feet of land, but they don't measure up to a hundred foot, a hundred feet of width. He's not, he's not alone in this, and that's one of the things that I'm gonna talk about later, but we've gotta address that situation. If a lot meets the, the square footage, even though it might be ten feet narrower or five feet narrower than, than a hundred feet, it still has to be given some consideration. Our standards being a twenty thousand square foot lot. Thank you.
Mr. Sharp?
Ask you another quick question?
Sure.
Did I understand you correctly saying that this, uh, PB is not gonna satisfy Mr. Hurd's requirements?
Correct.
So why are we, if we're doing this in the spirit of helping people that have exceptions and being fair, then why are we even considering this? We need to, we need to identify who has all the non-conforming lots in Southern Shores and, and try to understand what their problems are. I mean, taking one at a time is not gonna solve the, the overlying problem of fairness. If you do this for one person, then he's left out, and that's not fair to him.
And y'all, y'all are welcome to do, you know, again, I'm not, I'm not driving.
I'm just asking if I'm off base or not, I.
I mean, I think that's certainly, again, the council's prerogative to do it that way. You could, you could wait on this until there was a, an exception added for Mr. Hurd as well. You could vote on this tonight, you could do nothing if you wanted to. It, it's all within what you wanna do.
Yeah.
I don't think that there's a, I mean, I think there are pros and cons to voting tonight and then adding another exception later. I think there are pros and cons to sending this back to the planning board to add an exception and come back to you. I, I think that, you know, in some degree, you, you know, it's, it's who you're, it, the two situations that are in the planning board version that are before you tonight were both learned about prior to the last planning board meeting. Mr. Hurd's situation was learned about at the last planning board meeting. So it's really, I mean, if they'd heard about it before that, they might've added it into the exception, so, but it's certainly, the council's prerogative to send it all back if you want to, or to vote on it. I don't have any, it doesn't have any, you know.
I'm just trying to understand the.
Well, Fred, having, having become aware of this in the last, uh, about ten days, I think, I met with our, with our town staff, our town planner, and, and we came up with a motion that would, that would address these lots that are, that are over twenty thousand square feet, but are slightly narrower than, than a hundred feet we like to see as a standard lot. And I, I won't, I'll hold that motion to the appropriate time, but I'm, I plan to make a motion to address that at tonight's meeting if, if the occasion arises, and I hope it, hope it will.
I'd like to bring up also that we haven't learned, just learned about this in the last few weeks. I've been singing this song for months now about Mr. Hurd's situation, so it, F. Mr. Hurd has furthered his cause along more than anybody else has, more than I could have, because when he got up and spoke to the planning board meeting, I could see the light bulbs going off in people's heads. So, um, we didn't just learn about this recently.
Well, I, I just learned about it. I mean, I think Mr. Hurd's property, somebody had mentioned it before, but there's very many details that matter when you're looking at these exceptions. They're all worded very specifically, and if they're not, if they were worded specifically to make a narrow exception, then I needed to know exactly what needed to be put in there. I didn't learn about Mr. Hurd's till the planning board meeting in detail. I don't, I don't think most of the planning board had heard about it. I, I don't disagree with you that Mr. Hurd's had come up in the past because you had mentioned it, but I don't think it did that I had heard about the details of it. Mr. Sharp?
Good evening, thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Member of the council, mayor. No, no problem, it's a complicated topic. I'm Starkey Sharp, I'm a lawyer, I represent Mr. Love, who's the fellow that the second exception was drafted for. And, um, obviously it's complex, and I think Mr. Gallup has explained it. You chose to go in a direction to respond to something, which is the, which you know about, and, and you did a really broad response. And it wasn't dumb or stupid, or it was a decision you made, and it had a lot of debate and so forth, but it, but now you're finding that it went so broad that there's a number of things that it, it's too broad for, and now you're approaching it, and there's nothing wrong with it. It's a good process, it's working. The people have come to you, and you've recognized it, and the council sent this back to the planning board, and the planning board made some revisions, and some people came to the planning board, and the planning board listened to those people and made some further revisions, and they're doing what the council instructed. And you can keep doing that, and it's okay if it takes a number of more meetings to get it right. That's what the process is supposed to occur. There's nothing wrong with that. And it, it's taxing because it's a complicated topic, like your planning board chairman said. And that's what's happening. And I think that the town is doing a good job, at least from the perspective of Mr. Love's point of view, and I'm not trying to argue, I think everybody knows the, the context of it, cause it's pretty well explained here tonight. And I think you should keep going in the direction until you get it so that it's proper and it's fair, as the mayor said. It's supposed to be fair to people in terms of what they're doing, and fairness may be different for one property owner and a little different from another one in terms of what it's going. But what you're trying to do is reduce the non-conformities, but do it in a way that's fair to people, that in terms of money that they've invested and put into properties and relied upon the town's existing ordinances at the time when they bought their property and did it. So there's nothing wrong with the fact that we're having, that you guys are having this, this discussion and this debate, and there's nothing wrong with going through this, and if it takes a number of more meetings, that's okay, cause you're trying to get to the right result, that's what you're doing. And you probably can't do it all in, obviously you can't do it all in one meeting, you can't, you know, whatever you decide tonight, if you act on it or postpone it to tweak it some more, that's an appropriate thing to do. My client is satisfied with what's happened so far with respect to his property, cause he came to the meeting and the planning board responded, and the town staff has responded, and they listened and accommodated his request. And, and I don't think what my client's trying to do is at all at variances with the long-term goals of the town, and it makes sense. So we thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you. Ms. Scherzner?
Good evening again. Anne Scherzma, sixty-nine Hickory Trail. Um, whoo, wow. First, one thing I would like to clarify. The version PB, the eighteen oh nine PB, it actually, the language itself was drafted after the planning board met and voted. I find that troubling, to say that the planning board recommended eighteen oh nine PB by a four-to-one vote is not really accurate. The planning board recommended in concept what is in eighteen oh nine PB, but the planning board as a whole has not reviewed eighteen oh nine PB. The language that is now in section A to B is new language, and I don't think the planning board would like this language, because I don't think it's very well-written. I don't think it's crafted as well as it needs to be to achieve what the planning board was trying to do on January twenty-second. The planning board voted January twenty-second to amend the revised eighteen oh nine to include what Ben has offered here as this to B. But then the draft was done January twenty-fifth, so the planning board never really did approve this language. It just recommended it in concept. So that, to me, is an irregularity of process, procedure, 'cause I frankly think that Chairperson Morey and Mr. Ward might have some suggestions for how to improve this language. I join everybody else in saying that this is very confusing. I think that the original version, frankly, of the law that wasn't being interpreted to stop the non-conformities from being sold and developed was better written. You know, it was, it was less ambiguous than what you have now. You kind of have a snowball effect here. And I also join Ms. Morey in saying that maybe there is a need to step back and go holistic on this. And to answer Councilman Newberry's question, and let me say that I have attended every single planning board meeting about this issue since it came up last summer. Mr. Connors did, in fact, try to advance Mr. Hurd's situation, and the chairperson at that time did not allow him to continue explaining it. He thought that the time had gotten too late, it was late in the night, and that it was extraneous. Mr. Connors did try. I know about their situation. So that's just a clarification. But back to what Mr. Newberry said, Mr. Ward knows all of the, I'm speaking for you now, he knows all of the non-conforming lots in this town. He and Chairperson Weider went through all of them. They know the circumstances. They know who needs an exception and who doesn't. To pick up on what Mr. Sharp said and the number of meetings, it may well be reasonable at this stage for Mr. Ward to be in charge of some sort of task force, if you will, that may be kind of one of those words you don't want to talk about, but some way to pull this together so it's not so confusing, it's not so complex, and it does exactly what Mr. Neal said, which was, "All we want to do is prevent a hundred-foot-wide lots from being divided into two fifties." That's what Mr. Neal said. Things have just gotten overblown, and part of the reason is, sad to say, we, continuity was lost when Glenn Weider died. That set the planning board back, and there's had, they just have had to adjust, and it's been a painful adjustment. So I'm, I'm encouraged by what you all are saying. I think that more time needs to be spent with this. It's way too confusing. I think the section on ownership, wonderful. Mr. Gallup clarified who can be an owner, what is an owner. An LLC, you can't hide behind an LLC. You're, you're still an owner if you have land next door. But these exceptions are starting to confound the ordinance too much. I read it now, and I, I'm not even sure what to make of this new section. I have to read it three times. I can remember Glenn saying that he had to read the eighteen oh seven repeatedly to make sense of it. And I think we're now adding another time that we have to think about it. So that, that is what I would encourage. As you all know, I have not been in support, most of you know, I have not been in support of allowing Mr. Love an exception, not because of any personal animus, but because I believe the law at that time required him to recombine. Mr. Gallup disagrees. I also think there was a unique situation with Mr. Love's lot in that at one time, he had his adjacent property, which is sixty-two, and his non-conforming at sixty-four, both vacant simultaneously. Mr. Hurd never had that case. Mr. White never had that case. Ms. Osborne never had that case. I don't believe many of the others, if there are any, and Mr. Ward can correct me, had an opportunity to recombine when everything was vacant. And that's where I draw a distinction. I think you have to look at when the land was vacant and then apply the town policy. The other thing I would say, and I realize I'm going very long here, I apologize, is that I would appreciate the town council thinking about, and this is something else that Mr. Neal has mentioned now twice at two planning board meetings, think about enacting a maximum house size on smaller lots, on non-conforming lots. A six thousand square foot house should not be built on a fifty-foot-wide non-conforming lot. So I would ask that you consider that, drafting into the code restrictions based on the square footage of the lot, going from twenty thousand square feet down to however small you need to go. I, I think that's all that I have to say, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Good evening again, gentlemen. I'm here as a neighbor and of Mr. Love, whom I've never met. In my line, it looks like no good deed goes unpunished for Mr. Love. A number of years ago, when we were looking at the seventeen-bedroom, seventeen-bath house that was supposed to go across the street from me, Mr. Love had bought Dunn's Dune, had knocked it down or had plans to knock it down, and decided to try and do what town council did not have the rules to do at that time, which was to try and figure out how he could save his house from the monster that was going to be built next door. I understand he reached out to whoever was the owner at that time and paid a good amount of money for fifty feet. At that time, I don't know if anyone contacted him to tell him he needed to recombine the two lots. If you want to be angry, be angry at Frank Stick. He's the one that did the marketing steam, scheme of buy one lot, get one lot free. A fifty-foot lot, you buy, you get the second one for free. It was a hundred-foot lot. I have one. It's across the street. That's where the problem is. I have no intent of knocking down my lovely flat top and building two houses on the same lot. I know it's a lot, not two lots. And the fact that some people were able to get it through, I don't know how, to change that, that is on them. Mr. Love did a good deed. I would hope that he could be able to build on his fifty-foot lot. I would hope he would be building a flat top on his fifty-foot lot. That would be a lovely thing. And that's all I have. So, and I could not understand anything that y'all were saying. Somebody needs to put out, read whatever it is for us so we can hear, 'cause it's just very confusing. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Van Geeson.
Good evening again. Joe Van Geeson, two-two-eight North Dogwood Trail. I was going to suggest that we go ahead and identify all the non-conforming lots in town, identify the circumstances, who lives next door, who owns it, where that owner resides. Sounds like Andy Ward is ahead of me there. And try and identify the different kinds of circumstances that could be accommodated either by ZTA, those that you wish to conform, you know, wish to address, or maybe some non-conforming lots that you want to leave non-conforming and you don't want a ZTA to cover them. But there may be some circumstances, like the one just described with the ninety-foot lot, that he didn't have an opportunity to do any recombination, whereas ZTA might be an appropriate consideration, you know, with, with some compassion. So anyway, what I think has happened here is we had a marketing scheme. It created a duality of, of lot definitions. Somebody figured out a way to get around or was able to accommodate, accomplish a separation of the lots and build two houses on, on what was previously one lot. That raised a hue and cry. Town council was trying to fix it. And now, in the process, you're faced with a whole lot of different exceptions, and until you identify as well as you can all of the possible exceptions that might come up, you're going to be chasing your tails or you're going to be being asked to approve or consider variances to the existing ordinance. So my recommendation is try and figure out what is, you know, what's the lay of the land here? What are the circumstances that could come up? And don't get caught, to the extent you can help yourselves, with these other one-offs that might come up down the road. But don't try to make the rule cover everything. Make the rule cover what's reasonable and appropriate, and good luck.
Inequitable, inequitable.
Thank you, Mr. Van Geeson. Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak to this public hearing? If you could raise your hand. Seeing no one, Mr. Mayor, I will close the public hearing and give it back to you.
Thank you, man. Appreciate that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ZTA eighteen oh nine PB dated one-twenty-five-nineteen.
I have a motion to approve, um, ZTA eighteen oh, eighteen oh nine, Mr. Connors. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Chris.
I just wanted to speak for a second prior to, to seconding or not seconding. I have known the Loves for years. We, we've talked about this in various meetings, and so I just want to be up and out in the open on this stuff. They're good people, and they did indeed purchase the lot to stop the saga development. But I would also like to clarify that I designed the house on sixty-two. I'm making these numbers wrong. I apologize. The fifty-foot-wide lot, I believe, is sixty-four, and I did start to do some plans with them that were submitted. I wanted to let the public know that I am no longer the architect of record on that project. I have accepted no compensation for any work done, and, but I want to be upfront with everybody, and I want to make sure that the town knows that. And so before we go into a protracted discussion, I'd like to ask the town attorney his thoughts on that situation and how he, what he felt is in the best interest of the town, whether I should be voting, not voting, and, and then I will defer to his recommendation.
Mr. Nathan contacted me about this and told me what he's just told you, and my recommendation is that you, that someone make a motion to recuse him from voting on this proposal if a vote comes tonight. And that probably technically in a gray area, having no clear financial interest at this point since he's not, but it's given his past plans, he may have a financial interest that could come up, so I would, my recommendation is that he be recused.
I have a motion on the floor, council, for Mr. Connors. I'm looking for a second.
I'll make a motion that we recuse Chris from this vote.
I've got, already got a motion on the floor. I've got a handle on one on the floor. Let's handle the motions out here right now. There's, is there any, is there a second to Mr. Connors' motion? Not seeing a second. I'll hold that. Because I have no second, I can't go any further. You want to make a motion, Mr.?
Well, I, I would hold on just a second.
I can't make a motion yet.
Well, there's nothing to recuse him from, because he doesn't, there are three provision, there are three areas in the general statutes where you get recusals. There's one for legislative hearing, legislative zoning hearings, there's one for quasi-judicial hearings, and there's one when it's a contract related to your business and your finances and your family. And the two, the legislative and the contract say can't vote if they meet the standard. And the quasi-judicial says can't participate or vote if you meet the standard. So the general consensus of people that I know of is that that means for the legislative and for the contract, contract you have to stay away from another, for another reason. But for the legislative, that means you get to participate, you just can't vote. So if there's not a motion to vote on, there's nothing to recuse him from.
Thank you, man.
So, so once we have something to vote on, then we can-
Then we go back to recusing him?
Correct.
Tom, I'll make a motion that we send this back to the planning board. Isn't there already a motion on the floor?
Yours does.
Oh, okay. Did, did that motion die?
Okay. Sorry.
Sorry for interrupting you.
You're gonna, you're gonna oppose his, send it back to the planning board?
I'm gonna make a motion that we, I'm making a motion that we send it back to the planning board and that they identify, have staff identify non-conforming lots. And, and from what I'm hearing, we have a member of our planning board who knows pretty much what all those lots are, and look at all the exceptions, and take your time, don't, no rush, but to bring, take this back, revise, and bring back something that will address the lots, and hopefully we can see how many and understand how many people are affected in that. Our purpose in this, now, that's my motion.
Where, where did you stop the motion?
Right there.
You kept talking, that's why.
I know, but our purpose in this was to keep from tearing down and splitting a hundred-foot lots.
So you're-
And that's not what we're doing with this.
So your, your motion is to send this back to the planning board?
And have them identify all the affected lots in Southern Shores. I thought when we started this, we were told it was not that many.
Can I amend this motion without a second?
I'll second it.
You second Mr. McDonald's motion?
Yes.
Mr. Newberry, thank you. I would, I would ask to amend your motion just very, just very slightly, to include directing the town staff to draft a ZTA for, for planning board consideration of language that would allow the sale or development of a non-conforming lot that is at least twenty thousand square feet in area and greater than fifty feet in width, because we know we have a number of those lots, oceanfront and throughout, throughout the community.
Like the Hurd's.
Like the Hurd's, but I didn't want to reference any particular individual. That's, that's, that's exactly right. So I, I would, I would oppose that amendment, amendment to Mr. McDonald's motion.
I think they have that option with what I said, what I said.
Well, they hadn't addressed the two, the twenty thousand square foot lots in the past, Gary. I'm just making sure we-
Well, I understand, but they have that option as the planning board. I don't want to tie them up. I told them to look at them all and come back with something that'll work.
I agree with Gary.
And I, I understand what you're doing, Tom, and I don't disagree with you. Don't, don't get me wrong. I just don't want to tie their hands and, and put it to-
Are they, are they going to address the twenty thousand square foot lot if we don't ask them to?
Yes.
Is all I'm saying.
Yes.
That's fine, as long as we, I, I'm comfortable with that. So I, I'm sorry.
We're gonna send, my motion is to send this back to the planning board to look and identify all non-conforming lots. and identify all non-conforming lots, and come up with a ZTA that will address-
Non-conformers.
Non-conformers. And our original purpose was that we stop people from splitting 100-foot lots and developing.
Little bit 50-foot lots.
And that's what we're looking to do.
Just to clarify, Mr. Chairman and the council, so identify all non-conforming lots and come up with something that would allow all of those to be exempted. Is that correct?
Not necessarily to be exempted.
What is it you want the planning board to do once they identify the lots, is our question?
To develop a ZTA that will allow for people not to be penalized, is what I'm looking at.
If they're non, they own a non-conforming lot, you would like them to consider language that they would not be penalized if they own a non-conforming lot?
Yes.
Okay. To us, that means exempt, I think. So I just want to make sure that's everybody, the intent's here.
If I have a standalone 50-foot lot right now, I can build on it, if it's not next to my property. And I see no reason to penalize this gentleman, because he's got a 50-foot lot sitting beside his 100-foot lot.
I just want to clarify that we're to, staff and planning board are to identify all non-conforming lots in the town, and come up with a way to exempt or not exempt them. I'm hearing exempt. Is that correct?
Is that what you're hearing, council?
I'm not sure what I'm hearing here, because I think that it's, it's an overly ambitious endeavor to try and identify all non-conforming lots in the town. I, I get what you're getting at here, but I think it's-
When we started this, Jim, they said we only had a handful of non-conforming lots.
I, I don't recall hearing that. It may have been said, but I do know that we've never known. But what we're trying to do is address the tear downs. We, we really did stray from that, in my opinion. But now we're getting back to the tear downs to create two lots.
No, we don't want, we don't want that to happen.
No, we don't want that to happen. We're, I, I think an endeavor to try and identify all non-conforming lots is going to take a while. It's going to take a lot of staff resource time, and it's going to-
Andy supposedly already has one identified.
Andy?
I do not.
Peter, you have something you want to say?
Yeah, yeah, for Andy, if I could, real quick, just to clarify, the planning board, when they first spoke on this, made that comment about there are only a few, they meant, it was interpreted to us it was vacant. They, they intended to say, yes, there are very few vacant lots. So, Mr. Connors is correct, and the tear down redevelopment is what we're talking about, probably in the numbers. No question.
I think, I don't, I don't know who, who said something about a task force, whether it was Ms. Scherzmann, or Gary, or whatever. I'm, I'm not volunteered to be part of a task force. But what Elizabeth and I have talked about, and I've talked with Mayor Bennett about this, and I think some others too, I would like to be able to sit down with another planning board member, preferably Elizabeth. I've done a lot of work with these non-conforming lots, but I don't have them all. I mean, if you, if you think I got them all, you're sorely mistaken. There are more out here. But if Elizabeth and I, two members of the planning board, Wes Haskett and Ben Gallup, can go down example by example and say, how do we address this with proper language to cover ourselves going forward, but also be equitable to people that own non-conforming lots? Mr. Hurd's case, in my mind, is relatively easy. I think Ben could craft something that would take care of him. We have a lot that's 90 degrees rather than parallel in lot line, that is relatively easy. But there are some difficult examples that I have drawn rough sketches of, that I really would feel more comfortable if the four of us could hash this out. And I will, and Elizabeth and I will do more looking, and I'm sure Wes can, can weigh in too. But it wouldn't necessarily be a task force, but it would be something that we could come back with a lot more information than what we have right now. I feel like, as a planning board, we're still kind of fumbling around with this. And I'm, I'm glad that motion's out there to maybe kick it back to us. But I, I think that this is so important moving forward with our town that we need to get it right. And if it takes a little bit more time, like Mr. Sharp said, then we should take more time. And that's, that's where two-fifths of the planning board is coming from tonight. I can't speak for the other three, but I believe that they would be in, in agreement. So, thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
So I got a motion on the floor, and a second, to send this back to the planning board, basically.
Just to clarify that, is that only to identify non-conforming lots, period? Or is it to create language, recommend language back that would exempt all the non-conforming lots identified?
May I?
Add to it.
I don't know if I want to add to it, but you don't want to exempt all the non-conforming lots. You want to exempt, I'm guessing what you want is for the planning board to comprehensively come up with all the equitable, equitable exceptions to requiring conformance, essentially. You want some non-conforming lots, like we, I mean, we basically started a list. We've got two here, we've got another with Mr. Hurd. You want us to come up with the whole universe of possible equitable exceptions, and figure out how to integrate that into this ordinance? Is that-
Similar to that, but you may bring it back. They may bring it to us, and we say, no, that's not what we want.
And in doing that, you want us, want them to first identify every non-conforming lot in town, and then use that as a basis to derive the universe of all the exceptions that might be necessary? Yes, okay.
Now, can we restate the motion for the record, as Ben has described?
I'm not sure what I just said. I think what your motion, what you may want to amend your motion to say would be to send this matter back to the planning board, to identify all the non-conforming lots within town. Based upon that identification, to develop an ordinance and a recommendation to the town council that will address, attempt to comprehensively address the non-conforming lots that should be dealt with in an equitable manner differently from the desire to bring everything into conformance.
So you say?
Sounds good.
So we got a, we've got an amended motion and amended second. And I have no idea what I just said, but I hope that she would got it down.
Yeah, neither do I.
We're sending it back to the planning board.
Am I allowed to vote? Can I vote on this, in your opinion?
Yes.
Sending it back to the planning board, you can.
Yes.
We have a motion, we have a second, council. We have a clarification of the motion. Are you fine, are you okay with that, Peter?
Yes. I understand. I just, maybe, I just, I did want to make a comment to the council, and probably now's a good time. I've asked the finance officer to keep a look on the current budget performance for legal cost for this year. So I just want to alert the council that it may come a time very soon where we'll have to bring that to you to replenish that budget line if we keep on. And that's fine. I just want to make sure everybody understands that the town attorney is engaged with these issues, rightly so. But it is overwhelming right now, and we're doing it. But I just wanted to alert you to that.
Thank you, Peter.
It's better to spend on the front end than the back end.
We have a motion on the floor, council, which has been amended slightly by our town attorney. Does everyone understand the motion? Got a feel for it? We've had discussion? Any further discussion about this motion? You had a second earlier, right? All in favor of Mr. Gallup, and Mr. McDonald's motion, please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. So this goes back to the planning board.
Tom, do you, do we want to address Andy's request at this point?
I think, I think Andy can address that, can handle it, administrate it.
Andy didn't need to leave Ben out of the fight.
I think, I think we, I think we've addressed that. Under item six, new business, we've got a request of the town manager, Juniper Trail capital improvement update and recent damage repair options for Juniper Trail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council members. I requested this as an agenda item because of the damage that occurred to your new-
Excuse me, Peter. If you want to chat, you have to take it outside. Thank you.
I requested this agenda item due to the damage that occurred to your new Juniper Trail on the morning of January 3rd. Recall, I notified you that morning via email that a cable installation contractor for Spectrum had bored under the new Juniper Trail without first getting an appropriate clearance from 811. It was near house number 30. He bored from west to east and hit the Dare County water main that's buried on the east side of Juniper Trail, the new Juniper Trail. The gushing water caused a complete washout under a section of the new street, as you can see from the, from the image. It also rushed down a private property line, causing private property damage to a bulkhead, and caused earth to run off and fill a portion of the town's, town-owned canal. We've been in discussions with the insurance carrier, for Spectrum's contractor, and we've received a quote from our Juniper Trail contractor to fix this. Dare County Water Department did repack the void that you see here the best they could, and for now, the new street has not settled. But we're advised by engineers, two engineers, it will begin to settle, and it needs to be fixed in order to avoid collapse. Recall, council, that this is a new street that was constructed with a special formula base due to the constant and persistent effect of peak under the subsurface. It's been determined that an approximate 20 by 25-foot section of street has to be cut out, steel rebar laid, and a new pad pour to fix this. And this is all to fix the street the right way as it was. It has to be done in a timeframe. This all has to be done at one time, and it cannot be done one lane at a time by the contractor. The contractor will not close the street down, post, excuse me, do it lane by lane, because it will have to keep it, have to keep man 24 hours, and you just can't do that. So in order to fix it the right way, the contractor and the engineers all agree that the street must be shut down totally blocked for one week in order to be able to do this the right way. Even if we did it the conventional way with ABC base and asphalt, it would still have to be shut down approximately three days, according to the contractor and engineers. If we did it that way, it's not going to last but about four years before we start losing the street again. The repair is going to be funded by the current budget, and the insurance proceeds from the responsible party will pay that back. What I'm asking tonight is that council needs to decide whether the staff proceeds with the repair that will be made the way to keep, get the town whole with a new street that will last, but will require a one-week shutdown. Or do we proceed with the lesser repair and shut the street down approximately three days? Y'all are going to get the calls at home, just like we get them here when that street gets shut down. So I'm bringing this to you to make the decision, so we'll all be on the same page. Do we fix it the right way, shut it down for a week? Or do we fix it the old way? It's going to be deteriorating in about four years, and it only gets shut down three, three days. If we, despite whichever length we shut it down, we'll be doing our best to notify everybody within the area. I think we all know the neighborhood. And also, we'll be notifying Dare County. The one catch, I cannot pinpoint a day to shut it down, set day. Hopefully, we'll have two weeks' notice. We may not. But we'll be doing our best to try to notify everybody when we get the, the day from the contractor when he can do it. That'll all depend on the weather and their other jobs. So, that's what I'm bringing to council, let you make that decision, please.
You give us, you, you really can't give us a timeframe, because you don't know what the weather's going to do, what the contractor's schedule is.
We're hopeful, obviously depending on the weather, but we're hopeful it can be done three or four weeks from now. But if, if it can't, you know, we'll just keep on top of it. But he'll notify us at some point when he can start, and hopefully we'll have two weeks' notice, but I can't promise that.
Thank you, Peter. Council, I'd like to make a motion that we plan to affect repairs to Juniper Trail using the same method we used for the original work they've just completed. Even though it will involve a little bit longer shutdown time, it seems like we're going to only get three to four years out of, out of another repair. We're throwing money away. And a second from Mr. McDonald. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of approving my motion, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion was made and carried unanimously, I believe. Thank you. Thank you, council. Item B on, under six, was requested by the town of Manio Board of Commissioners, a resolution for naming the Bonner Bridge replacement, the Mark Masnight Bridge. Town of Manio had proposed this and sent this to me for our consideration, to us, I should say. The town of Nagset, I believe, has, has also done a resolution using the same wording. The town of Kill Devil Hills has also. The county, the county board of commissioners has not done that. They have, they have refused to, to name, to name the bridge. So it's, it's really your, your pleasure, council, if you want to make a motion or not, to, to address this.
The commission did approve it this week.
I think, I think they, I think the article I read said that they, that it passed, but it didn't pass with a unanimous, three to ten.
Right. As I understand it, the DOT rules require the county to have a unanimous vote before the DOT Board of Transportation will take it up. And so technically, it did not pass that threshold.
Does that answer the question? Okay. So, I have, I have no motion. If you want to make them up, if you want to do anything about this, or just go on to the next agenda item. We're not required to do it.
I'll make a motion. We do it.
Do we name it?
We do a resolution to name it after Mark.
I have a second.
I'll say it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye? All opposed? I don't get the final count. I think Jim and I voted against it. You got it, Sheila?
Thank you very much. Motion's made and carried to name the Bonner Bridge, the new Bonner Bridge, the Mark Masnight Bridge by, by the town of Southern Shores. This time we need to, need to approve the planning board's election of officers. That's in tab five of our book. I need a motion, council, to-
I'll say it.
I have a motion and a second to approve the planning board election of officers. They were chairperson Elizabeth Morey and vice chair Joe McGraw. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the chair, the planning board's officers, officer appointments, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion's made and carried by five to zip, I think. The next item is, was requested by council McDonald to be placed on the, on the agenda, Coyotes in Southern Shores. Gary, you want to take that this time?
I ask that that be placed on there, because we had some concerns coming from our community for the public safety. And Peter, do you want to speak to that?
I will speak to that.
Thank you.
I understand- I understand 100% the emotions behind coyotes. I have been dealing with coyotes since the late 1990s when I was a staff attorney for Chilwell County, and also later when I was county attorney and county manager for Chilwell County, I was dealing with coyotes. Your town hall here in Southern Shores has been receiving calls of coyote sightings both day and night for the last several years, probably three, at least three years. And I have no information from any expert source that the coyote population in Southern Shores has increased or decreased over the last year or the year before. I do not have any credible information about that. As I reported to the council on January 15th, and in response to Councilman Newberry's concern that there had been two reported coyote sightings that week, town staff, including the police department, have not received any firsthand complaint of an aggressive coyote engaging in an act directly threatening bodily harm to a human or pet. I know the words mean a lot, but to us, it does mean that we receive a lot of calls sometime, hey, I saw a coyote, but we've never received a firsthand call, a coyote just attacked my child, or a coyote just attacked my cat, a witness to that. We've received word a few times of a citizen stating a neighbor told him or her a cat had disappeared. But we've received no firsthand witness complaint of an aggressive coyote threatening physical bodily harm to a human or pet, and that includes no 911 calls that are recorded by our police department. There are and have been sightings over the years of coyotes throughout the town, and I've got a full library of photographs that people have sent me over the last three years of coyotes in Southern Shores at night and day. Neither town staff nor any of the first responders, and I hope everybody will understand this, will physically respond to a sighting of a coyote unless it shows obvious aggressiveness toward a human or pet, or unless it's foaming at the mouth. We will certainly, at town hall, advise citizens' calling about the techniques to cohabitate with them, and they have been on the website for at least 13, 14 months now on how to deal, and we have publicized those. As the council remembers, the town sponsored a coyote awareness forum here in this room in December of 2017, 13 months ago. Wildlife biologists from the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission spoke to a large crowd here about how to cohabitate with wildlife coyotes. That forum and all the related information, including information from several other sources, is posted on the town website to encourage citizens to be educated on how to adapt and cohabitate with wildlife coyotes in Southern Shores. Subsequent to that, information was included in several town newsletters. Periodically, we will publish the coyote links in the town website and newsletters. The coyote presence on the Outer Banks has been mentioned in newspapers and on social media for several years now, at least. Hunting of coyotes is not allowed in Dare County due to a federal court order entered for the protection of red wolves. Hunting is defined by the state of North Carolina to include firearms, longbows, and crossbows. Two years ago, I did make an effort to discuss with wildlife officials if the Wildlife Resources Commission would support a legal effort to now relieve Dare County Outer Banks from the hunting ban since there are no or very few red wolves known to exist on the Outer Banks portion of Dare County. I did that as a possible way for hunting to occur in some county areas, thereby hopefully relaxing the coyote population in the towns. As you know, there are a couple of municipalities that do allow hunting on public lands already, Kitty Hawk and Nagset. My effort to have the federal court order amended with the blessing of the Wildlife Commission didn't go anywhere, obviously. As I also indicated to the council in my January 15th response to Councilman Newberry, I do not recommend killing coyotes by trapping in Southern Shores, and I'll say that, continue to say that. The reason is, all the experts and all the experts agree, both those from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service here, right here in Dare County, also those with North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission, scientific groups, and even our local trappers agree that attempting to reduce coyote herds by killing them through trapping only results in greater biological increases in the populations the following year. Everybody agrees to that. Any landowner can have a licensed trapper trap and kill coyotes during the trapping season. The trapping season is December 1st through February 28th. Our town ordinance provides that the police chief must approve method and location of trapping. But if the council decides it wants to respond to citizen fears by killing some coyotes through trapping, the following protocols would apply by law. The absolute trapping season is December 1st through February 28th. The only way, the only exception to that is if a coyote is depredating a structural house, then a depredation permit can be obtained to try to trap that coyote, to get it out of a burrow underneath a house foundation. Only North Carolina licensed trappers can trap. The trapper must hold written permission from a landowner to trap or even scout for a potential trapping site. In my conference with a trapper just last week, he looks for tracks and scat to locate his trapping sites. He doesn't just go to the sighting locations. By law, the trapper must kill the trapped coyote at the trapped location. By law, the coyote must be put down at the trapped location, period. As I said, any landowner can engage the licensed trapper. The trapper I've consulted with said it would probably take him a week to a week and a half, or maybe two weeks, to scout out the entire town to locate the prime sites to trap and kill coyotes. He, again, would have to get written permission from everybody. It's not just the large landowners. He informed me, he wouldn't necessarily be looking at the large sites, he could be looking at smaller sites. Just some final remarks, all the experts agree, the coyotes are here on the entire Outer Banks to stay. The human population, all the experts agree, has to adapt to living with them until they naturally move on. Trapping will not eradicate coyotes, and it will cause the population to increase the following year biologically. So everybody agrees to that. The food sources in Southern Shores and other towns, Duck and Kitty Hawk and Kill Devil Hills and Nagset, all attract coyotes. Pet food outside, as well as waste cans, will attract them, even the cans with the lids on them. Brushy areas on lots attract them. Human interaction cannot be avoided. The experts all agree to that. It's how to deal with that interaction. Again, aggressive coyotes that are threatening physical harm to a human can be reported to 911. Again, we have not received any of those calls. Sightings of coyotes are not uncommon. I just want to keep repeating that. Sightings of coyotes are not uncommon. We have a full library of pictures that people have emailed me over the last three or four years of coyotes daytime and nighttime. It's been mentioned that we're seeking solutions. There is no solutions for eradicating the coyotes. There's no hunting. Trapping doesn't take them away, it only increases them biologically in numbers the next year. Human adaptation is apparently the only solution. And I will say, concluding the remarks, if council wants the staff to implement killing coyotes by trapping on private property, that's your decision to make, certainly. And we can certainly implement your kill-by-trapping program and convey that information to its progress to the citizens as to whether it's working or not. But again, it's your decision. That's really all I have.
Thank you, Peter. I appreciate your input.
Thank you, Peter. Everything I've read substantiates what Peter just told us, and I've gone even beyond the normal information we've received through our video here and through other means we've have by going on the internet and doing a little more research. Not only do they physically reproduce in greater numbers if they're threatened or trapped or killed, in this case, it's automatic they're going to be killed, but initially with the trapping, you leave an open, some openings, some vacancies, I'll say, for coyotes, they were given communities to come in into your town, into your community. We have a wonderful habitat for them here. We have lots of what they call undeveloped areas where there's a lot of trees, a lot of woods, a lot of fresh water for them. There's places they can hide. I'm not an advocate of trapping them just for the sake of killing because it just doesn't work. They reproduce at such an increased rate after, when their population starts to decline, that you end up self-defeating. I've talked to people who live in Nagset, they've been trapping now for over two years. They've killed 21 or 22 animals. According to the residents who live there, they see almost no difference in the number of coyotes in their backyard or in the property adjacent to where they live. In other words, it's not, they're killing the coyotes, but it's not solving their problem. They're still down there.
Does anyone want to make a motion to address this anyway?
Do we need a motion, or could we just continue to do the workshop annually or something of that sort, just to educate?
I'm strongly in favor of that. If we get people out and they come and hear the facts from the people who actually know the facts. I think that's, Peter gave us a good presentation tonight. I think it's based on factual information.
I mean, on a broad level, I don't disagree with anything that Peter said, but on an individual level, and hearing some folks in the audience and knowing, I've got a small dog too, and my wife cares very much about the small dog, and if we had a coyote den in our yard, I would imagine that she would be signing us up to have the coyote eradicated. You know, so on a personal level, it's different than on a policy level. I have no qualms about killing coyotes. I don't, like you said, it doesn't really affect the population anyways. But individuals may take that action for this time period if they so, and potentially, could, Peter, is it acceptable that, let's say, CPOA on their own could do that on their land?
It is. Any private property owner can hire a licensed trapper to trap during the fur-bearing season, and if they do that in Southern Shores, ordinance in the town code provides that the police chief would approve the method and location to make sure for public safety.
So trapping is still possible?
Oh, sure.
It's just, it's within a certain season, and it, and right now, it's available at the personal level. The CPOA could do it, or SCA could do it on their lands, but obviously, if an individual had a den...
Or a property owner can do it on their own.
Yeah, exactly.
If they can hire a trapper and come trap.
Well, my concern would be if coyotes are being trapped, they use steel traps, and it would be awful if a child were to get...
For the homeowner, if you had them come on your property, it would represent a significant liability, I imagine. But the homeowner could do it.
Yeah. But if a child were to get caught in one of those steel traps, or a dog or cat, it's bad.
We'll say to you that last year, the first year of Nagset's trapping, the trapper trapped two feral dogs and a tame dog. The tame dog being the $40,000 Belgian Malinois owned by the sheriff's office. They weren't harmed, they were released, and the Malinois didn't even have a broken foot, but they were trapped in the traps.
I like one thing that Chris said, is I've got no problem killing coyotes, but I'm not for a trap and kill program. I've heard the same discussion over the more than 20 years about we need to hunt down and cull the deer herds, the fox herd, the raccoons, and I'm just not for targeting a species of animals out there unless it's a, you know, a demonstrated documented threat. You know, it's just, where do we stop? We came to Southern Shores for its nature. We're going to have to learn as humans to adapt to nature to a certain degree. Now, that does not mean I'm not for doing something about coyotes, but every coyote management plan that I've read, and I've read about two or three of them recently, they say that one of the most important things to do is you need to, what they call haze these animals when you see them, and don't feed your cats outside. There are a lot of things that we as individual property owners can do to try and negate the threat.
I grew up in California, and they have a significant amount of coyotes. Now, there's a lot more land and a lot more hills, so we grew up with them, and they're everywhere. So they, on a personal level, they don't scare me, but I do understand the fear of small animals and dogs and such, but, you know, it is a tricky thing to live with. And so I think that people's fears are justified, and I think there's an adjustment period because maybe there hasn't been the awareness here that we, that, you know, in California it's not as big of a deal because you're aware of that and expect it. It's possibly because it's just so unexpected.
May I follow up on that comment? Since that recently, some of the sightings that were reported to us by citizens, there was some surprise from those who were reporting them. Surprise being, why aren't y'all doing something from the staff? We certainly try to help everybody, do whatever we can to help somebody, and probably, we will continue to do, pass on public information and assistance when somebody calls, but when somebody is surprised that we don't put everything, stop everything, and run out and start shooting coyotes, that's, I think, I sensed a little bit of that in some of the latest reportings. Why aren't you immediately doing something? And we're not, because it's a sighting of a piece of wildlife in Southern Shores, and we can't do anything unless it is a life, I mean, a threat to the human's safety, or pet, or it's foaming at the mouth. So that's why staff doesn't react in an emergency mode when a citizen calls in, but we will continue to try to do the best job we can to inform them on how to interact and locate information.
You started to make a motion, Gary.
No, I just said, could we do the workshop ongoing so we can, sometimes folks aren't affected, they may be out here right next time, and we need to continually educate and let folks understand that we know that there's coyotes in the neighborhood. And, you know, if you're walking down the street, you encounter one, you're going to hesitate, I don't care who you are. But to educate what to do, and I know we have lost small animals to whomever or whatever. Deer are not aggressive like that, so coyotes get to blame and probably are to blame. Cats and dogs that are, you know, small, you've got one, and there's coyotes right around us. So to continue to do our workshops and put it on the website.
Recommend people keep the cats indoors. That'll help.
I think the biggest takeaway from last forum was, he said if you do anything, do not feed your pets outside or even in an open garage. That was what wildlife biologist said. If you take anything away from this forum, listen to that part.
What's the possibility of having another workshop?
Chris Turner and his supervisor, those biologists, would be glad to come. I think it would probably, I'm just suggesting this, it would, it needs to be an opportune time, probably after the heat of the summer. He may say he can come sooner, but I, you know, I'm sure we can get him.
I picked that up in the coyote management plans that I've read, but unfortunately, I have had a number of people tell me directly in Southern Shores that they feed animals. They feed fox, they feed the raccoons, and they feed all these other... They feed fox, they feed the, uh, raccoons, and they feed all these other, you know, deer. I've got one on my own street, a few houses away. I just found out, uh, last week that they feed, they put bags of deer food out. That's the absolute worst thing that we can do if we're trying to, um, manage the wildlife. We're just setting up a Burger King for coyotes.
Okay, let's move on.
Mayor's response.
General Public comment.
Oh, General Public.
General Public comment. Anyone else like to speak? Wes is bringing a sheet up right now for me. Appreciate y'all toughening it out tonight, and the ones of you still here. Ann Swerzmann?
I'm a little bit excited.
Thank you. I'll thank you even louder. Thank you. Uh, I have no further, um, comments or responses at this time. Counsel members, uh, let's start with Mr. Nason. Mr. Newberry? Thank you. Garrett?
Motion adjourned.
I've got, haven't asked, ask, do you?
I have nothing.
Your motion adjourned?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, meeting is adjourned.